We'll open tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting, February the 1st, 2022. Welcome to everybody that's joining us here tonight. City Council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting of January the 18th. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
Submit.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Questions on the agenda for the city manager? Any questions on the agenda for the city manager? Okay.
Yes, I have one.
Sure. Sure, Chief. Go right ahead.
The recent, the past month has been a very bloody month for law enforcement, for those who don't keep up with it. I think we've had 13 shots across the nation. I don't know how many actually died from it. More important than that, I believe we've had eight law enforcement officers across the nation took their own life. And I'd like to remind everybody what our officers go through on a day-in, day-out basis. I served as police officer 25 years myself, so I know, have a little insight into it. A lot of it's, you go from call to call. We used to get complaints that the officer didn't smile enough. Well, that officer might just left a SIDS death where an infant was dying, dad died, and he had to console the parents. You flash your lights when you go down the road because the police car's sitting up there. Well, he might be looking for a child molester instead of just writing you a speeding ticket. Keep that in mind. You know, I missed a lot of birthdays and a lot of Christmases. And one that sticks out my mind, I missed my daughter's 16th birthday. I felt bad about it. But then I got thinking about, not a day goes by, and this is what I'm leading up to, not a day goes by that Will Beekner doesn't cross my mind. He was on, I was a lieutenant, and he was on my shift. He often got to the car a little too fast. He liked to drive fast. One thing I remember about him. But I got upset because I missed a few birthdays and whatnot, but Will Beekner is going to miss a lot of birthdays. He'll never be at another birthday party again. He'll never be at another Christmas. And he'll never have a grandchild that he can experience, all because some person, I'll call a person, for lack, because I'm in here in public, I'll call him a person, decided he'd take his life. This young man, I've known this young man my whole, the whole time he was at the police department. I remember when he got hired. One of the finest young people you'll ever meet. Always had a smile on his face. And I can remember at the hospital when he lost his life, went back in the room where he was at, and I teared up because I realized it should have been me, instead of one of my officers. And I call them my officers because he'll tell you, they'll always be part of you when you're a chief. Instead of Chief Anderson, he'll tell you the same thing. And I often think it should have been me because I've had my career. I've seen my child married. I've experienced all of that. So it's something you never forget. And I said, "We're going to get emotional, but it's hard not to." But we had this memorial service, and the city of Auburn turned out unbelievable. The streets were lined downtown, all the way to, from the arena to, the arena was packed, and all the way from the arena to the graveside, people were standing, waving at the processions that went by. And so, what can you say? It's great to live in a town where you think so much about law enforcement and support them like you do. But I ask you to support them even more because they're going through a lot right now. It's the toughest job. See, and the thing people don't realize, law enforcement is not a job, it is a calling. It had to be a calling for you to do it. Who in their right mind would want to go to gunfire when gunfire's put out? A police officer has been called to do the job when he gets, when they put out a call of shots fired, wants to see just how fast he can get there. Will Beekner was one of those guys. He wanted to see just how fast he could get there. He often would go out of his beat to cover another beat to make, see if he could help someone. He was, he was, he was one of those officers, like I said, he's always in a good mood. Even when I chewed him out about something, he smiled at me, said, "Have a good day, Lieutenant." You know, he was just one of those guys. And I honestly can say, it probably should have been somebody like me. An old man that's done his time and, 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 and experienced a lot in life that he'll never get to experience. With that being said, I have been talking with the city manager and director, register, and chief Anderson, trying to come up with a way we could honor Will Buckner that would be forever remembered. And I got to credit Megan on this one, and the director and the chief. I told them the idea and challenged them to, challenged Megan to come up with a way we could do it. And she has a great idea. We're going to name, I'm going to ask the council, and let me say this about this council. We disagree on a lot of things. Most, most, every meeting, we're going to disagree on something. But I guarantee you tonight, we'll be in solidarity to this resolution I'm asking for, we passed tonight in the, in the regular meeting. Excuse me just a minute, let me get my thoughts back together. We will be united in this cause. City manager, Ms. Crouch suggests that we name the new street, new connector road from Highway 14 over to Richland Road to Will Beekner Boulevard. And I think that's a great way to memorialize him because how many kids would be going to school and ask their mom and dad, "Who was Will Beekner?" And they'll get a chance to tell them what a police officer does and how he stood up for their life. And I think it would be fitting that he's going to a school area because he loved children. And he was just a great all-around guy. So with that being said, Megan, you had to help me through this.
Just need to move to suspend the rules to consider a resolution under other business on tonight's agenda to name the Richland Road Connect, the Richland Connector Road, Will Beekner. I believe it's Parkway, if you're okay with that, instead of Boulevard.
Yeah, that's fine. I moved to suspend the rules tonight to consider this resolution in the regular business, in the regular meeting.
I'll second. Is there any discussion or further comments from the council?
I just got one question. From Richland Road, you said Richland Road Connector. Where is that?
It's a brand-new $8 to $10 million project that we're building from Martin Luther King Drive slash Highway 14. Just for geography's sake, east of the Chinese restaurant, people know where that is. Going north all the way to Richland Road, it will come out at Creekside Elementary's Westernmost driveway.
Okay, I got you.
And this, this project will be out to bid very, very soon. And so, and it's important. This is a road that the city is wholly funding with general fund money. It'll be a very nice road. It'll connect to schools and parks and homes, and will very much be something people travel every day, and will see the name every day. And this is one of the largest road projects we've undertaken in many, many years. So I think it's very fitting that it be named as such, if the council so desires. One other suggestion is, we have, you know, we have Will's wife Sarah here, and then son Henry, it happens to be his third birthday, Sarah, is that correct? Fourth birthday, fourth birthday. And Henry can, he's, he's having a good day. He's been to the fire station today and so on. But I would recommend it is Henry's birthday, and I'm sure they'd like to get to celebrating that you move this, this up further in the agenda so that we don't have to do other item of business. If the council is, is willing to consider that when we get into the regular agenda, we'll move it up right before consent.
Absolutely.
So we can get the family moving on. You're welcome.
Chief Dawson, thank you for bringing this forward. You have such a unique perspective that nobody else up here has. And we value that perspective, and Auburn's better because we have you up here with that perspective.
Thank you.
Did you actually vote on this?
Not yet.
Okay, just checking.
We're still in the commentary period.
Exactly, just checking.
Certainly, the Will's family will never forget you, and we love you forever. This will be very poignant, and it'll be very, and it's very important to our community. We get a lot of calls about traffic on Richland Road, and especially every year when school starts. And so strategically for our city, this will be a very, very important opportunity for people to find other ways to get in and out of that busy area of our community. So I believe it'll be well-traveled. In the future, we have dreams and ambitions and a vision that there'll be places out there where children and families will go and play and enjoy their time together. And so I believe there'll be a lot of smiles as people go up and down that road. And it'll have Will's name on it forever. So it's a very proud moment for our city. And I'm very proud and thankful for this council for doing this. I'll have to give Councilman Griswold a lot of credit. He pushed and promoted this idea of trying to get this road built, and, and asked for the council's strong support in making sure that we funded this to get this done. And so he should receive that credit too, for that work on that. But we're very proud to do this, and thank you for the sacrifices that you continue to make. Okay? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move that forward, and we'll suspend the rules, and we'll move that to an item on the agenda. Anything else for tonight's Committee of the Whole?
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I would like to see if this council would be willing to, on the next Committee of the Whole, discuss our sign ordinance with relation to how it impacts community art, and specifically to murals. But I'd like us to possibly discuss how we can look at the ordinance and its unintended consequences of maybe precluding art to be in our community. So if we could, and since council's in agreement, I'd like to add that to our next Committee of the Whole for the second meeting in February, just to discuss how we would go about that process.
I'm in absolute support of that idea.
Everybody else in the council, okay with that? So we'll start a little early at the next meeting. Beth, would you, I mean, I would suggest that we kind of maybe get an understanding of what we do allow and don't allow at this point in time, how the rule does manifest itself, and then we can move forward to, if we would like to suggest potential alterations or changes. Is that?
Sure. Yeah, no, not to, that conversation would be, how do we go about any additional recommendations, whether that's a change in the ordinance or an addition, additional ordinance that would offset something in that ordinance. But we just have had a situation arise that spoke to a mural in our community, and, and I just want to make sure that we're giving art its property.
Okay.
Good, all right.
We also, just quickly, the planning commission has, has looked at this just a little bit. And there was a discussion at the time, one about mural regulations and one about an arts commission. And one of my responses to that, I was unaware at the time, that that recommendation was, was being made from the staff levels. The council would need to look at an arts commission side. That also would involve more than murals. That may have to do with many other things, such as art in public places, which is a longtime goal through our Parks and Recreation Department from a, a cultural standpoint. So we're going to talk with you a little bit about that in this discussion and talk about separating the two, because they're related but different, because the murals reside in the zoning ordinance as part of a sign ordinance. And then, you know, there's many benchmarking things that can be done to look at other cities and how that's done. But just so you get your mind around it, I'll ask for you to separate the two moving forward, other than, you know, and let you know that Planning Commission has taken a light look, and we'll see what you have to say next week to get further direction of how much, how soon you want Planning Commission to take a harder look at the mural piece.
Two weeks, right?
Yeah.
Sorry. We've been meeting every week, so I just.
I understand. We're throwing off our schedule recently.
Have yet another meeting, yes, exactly.
Get it. Not a problem. Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll add that to the Committee of the Whole for the 15th. Okay. Anything else on the, related to the agenda tonight, or council have any?
Yes, Ms. Smith.
Sure, please go ahead.
We had some incidences, and everybody's aware of some loud noise and disruption this past weekend. And, and I'd like to know what we can do differently or better, or what approach we can take. I know we don't have a noise, noise ordinance per se. And perhaps this is something we could also discuss at the next Committee of the Whole, if you staff could make some recommendations on how we could proceed in the future. That would be great.
I'm happy to do that. We also had a response that, that wasn't a response that we were, were completely pleased with in how some things happened. You know, we do have a lot of college students in town. We have a lot of noise. And the chief Anderson has made it very clear that moving forward, and we've also notified the university that moving forward, and I sent the council an email about this. I mean, our typical deal with noise around town is people get one warning, and then if we come back a second time, it will be shut down, or there will be citations issued. That's protocol we're going to follow. Our police officers do a wonderful job of trying to balance the community needs, university needs, and so on. And we have clarified, you know, since the incidents of last week, and Public Safety Director Register may have something to add, but we've, we've clarified what our procedure is. And Chief Anderson's been very clear. And we've also met with the university about it so that everybody's on the same page. And I don't want to pick on fraternity parties. They're, they're one piece of it, but people have parties here, there, and everywhere, citizens, students, and other groups and otherwise. So we'll be happy to give you more information, but I want to be clear where we stand on that policy. And we have informed the university. Student Affairs is, is very aware. Did I miss anything?
I think you covered it very well. Unless we have any further questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I think one thing important to point out with that, and I do appreciate Colonel bringing it up, but I, what I read from our assistant police chief, I believe is the one that put it out, he took full ownership of that problem and admitted, "We probably could have done better." And I, again, as a council, will apologize, but, because I will defend the police department to no end. But some things could have been done differently, and I think our senior staff has realized that. And I know them guys are dedicated, and I really would be shocked if it occurred again with the command staff we have now.
Yeah, we had similar challenges in the fall, and they were handled the way that we plan to handle them now. And so one of the things that challenging living in a college town is people accept noise, even though some do complain about it from the football stadium on a football Saturday. But on a, on a regular night, people get excited. And also in the winter, we have more issues with leaves off the trees, so it's not an excuse. But we'll be happy to, to talk with you about it if you need additional information.
I actually heard that one out on Cox Road. That was a pretty good band.
Believe me, I've, I've heard things. We had a complaint in the fall that we had people on the other side of the interstate complaining. And our police tried for two hours to find the source of the noise and found it. And your sound was traveling five-plus miles. People were complaining about it, and neighborhoods in between. So we're working on that, but I don't know if the volume is up, the topography is different or what, but we're looking into all, like, all angles.
I think the equipment is stronger.
I think the equipment is stronger. And, you know, you do, are going to run a risk of if the equipment is stronger and you use it to its full capacity, you may not have a party much longer. So.
All right. Anything else on the Committee of the Whole? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. We adjourn with the Committee of the Whole. It is past 5 o'clock. So Lindsay, we'll go ahead and move into the regular agenda.
Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
Hovey?
Here.
Carson?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Bitten?
Here.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the first meeting of the month, and so we'll start tonight under Mayor and Council Communications with recognizing our Outstanding Employee of the Month and many other, a couple of other employees with their service awards.
This is Mayor Ron Andrews. We're proud to introduce you to our Employee of the Month for the month of February, as well as an employee with a special recognition in the many of our outstanding men and women at this city and their service awards. We're pleased today to introduce you to our February Employee of the Month. I have a memorandum here from John Hoare, Inspection Services Director, that was written to Scott Cummings, our Executive Director of Development Services. And Scott sent this to Megan Crouch, our city manager. I'm pleased to nominate Zach Smith as the Employee of the Month. Zach began his tenure with Inspection Services Department in 2019. Prior to this, he served in the, in the city of Auburn's Police Department since 2008. Zach settled into his role as a plan reviewer quickly, with not only exceptional technical skills, but also skills to work well with his coworkers in addition to providing quality customer service. Zach has brought great value to inspection services and is consistently exceeding expectations as a plan reviewer. He demonstrates this through taking on tasks, no matter the magnitude, including reviewing small storage sheds to complex commercial and industrial buildings. Zach's time management skills set him apart in this role. He is able to quickly identify the most pressing issues and the most optimal path to a solution or completion of that task. Over the past year, Zach has played an integral role in the design, testing, and implementation of the new plan software on base, which is utilized by multiple city departments. Zach also continually monitors and takes action to improve the process of permitting, inspection, and completion of projects utilizing City Works. This keen knowledge of both software platforms and technical savvy allows him to envision how improvements will benefit all users. He routinely reviews and updates our business process workflow to capitalize on efficiency in order to deliver timely and quality service to our customers. Zach strives to better not only his role in the plan review process, but also to add value to all inspection services functions. This includes support of the Development Services Business Unit. He is an exemplary employee and an asset to the city of Auburn. Congratulations, Zach, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Certainly, congratulations to Zach. We appreciate his great work, and to Ashley and Bart, and to Tim. Certainly wish my old teammate and friend, Tim Woody, the best in retirement. He has served the city for 35 years and been a good friend the last two and a half years. He and I have been part of a book club as we have read different books revolving around racial reconciliation. Five of us who all played football together at Auburn High School have been getting together weekly and going through books together. But Tim's a special man. I'm glad he's going to remain in our community and look forward to continuing to do life with him. Want to thank everybody who was involved with the polar plunge last weekend. Thanks certainly our Parks and Rec staff, Elizabeth Kaufman, for putting that on. It benefits Lee County Special Olympics. But there were also members of our police department that jumped in. There were members of our fire department that jumped in. We had EMS people in case folks got too cold out there. It was the coldest polar plunge we've had yet since I've been the mayor. But it was great to see a number of people out there having a good time, doing something pretty crazy to benefit others. I want to remind everybody, the citizen survey will be coming out soon, and your address might be selected. If you receive that in the mail, please, please take the time to fill that out. Those questions are important. That guidance is important to the city as it leads us straight into the budget, which prioritizes the money that we spend, that you give us as taxpayers to make Auburn a better place. So if you really receive citizen survey, please take time to fill that out. During the Committee of the Whole tonight, we had a number of discussions. We'll soon be approving, I believe, the new name of the road. There will be the connector road between Richland Road and Highway 14, which will now become Will Beekner Parkway. Chief Dawson brought that to our attention tonight. Mayor Pro-Tim, Beth Whitten, has asked us to consider a discussion about community art at our next Committee of the Whole. And Councilman Griswold also asked for us to have a further discussion about noise, noise mitigation efforts here in the city. And I believe that clears me up. From Mayor's Communications, anybody on the council have anything they'd like to announce tonight?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I will be hosting a senior citizen Valentine Ball on Saturday, February 12th, from 47, at the Boykin Center Auditorium. And all senior citizens in the communities, community is invited to come out and enjoy.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Doe. That's great. Anyone else in the council have something they'd like to announce?
I just would like to acknowledge, I think February is our city manager's anniversary month. So happy anniversary. And I know it's been a very fulfilling and challenging year, but you've done a great job from my perspective, and I just appreciate all that you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to tell on myself. I called Kristen Reed, our Human Resources Director, 3:30 this afternoon and said, "I just realized," you know, I had a memory pop up on social media, and said, "I just realized it's one-year anniversary." I was just motoring through, I have much going on and motoring through the meeting, but I appreciate that very much. And I enjoy serving in this role.
Well, come on out to the senior citizen ball.
Come out to the senior citizen ball?
Sure.
Connie, what are you trying to say about mine?
Mr. Griswold.
You ought to feel like one.
I'd just like to acknowledge that today is the first day of Black History Month, and I encourage everybody to embrace and enjoy that.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else on the council? Okay, now it's time for Auburn University Communications.
Hi, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. It was a beautiful day outside today. I was studying outside. Lovely weather, lovely weather we're having. So today, 3 o'clock marked the kickoff of SJA elections. So if y'all can avoid it, avoid going on campus this week, or you'll get just bombarded by, "Vote for me, vote for me." But that's, you know, civic engagement. We love to see that. So by Friday night, we should have a new president, vice president, Ms. Auburn, and a whole new senate. So we're really excited about that. And today also marks the kickoff of Black History Month. Auburn University is working with the Office of Inclusion and Diversity this month. All month long, events are going to be going on. I think tomorrow night, they're having a soul food night, movies all month, keynote speakers. So all students are encouraged to go to those. I'm planning on attending lots of them. And they can just sign up on AU Involve or just show up. So that's really exciting. And then Auburn's doing pretty well in basketball. Like, I guess, you know, I'm really into sports, but I think they're doing pretty well. So they'll be playing Alabama tonight. So again, maybe stay away from that area if you're not going, traffic.
I hope someone's saving you a seat.
I hope so. I mean, I saw students sitting outside this morning at like 7:00 a.m. when I was going on a little walk. Hopefully, they were doing Zoom classes or reading some books or something. I don't know. Because they've been sitting out there all day. But we have tried, since that last time at Pearlville, they've done wristbands this time, so people don't have to camp out overnight, which is good. And then, like I said, last time, Auburn baseball is working on a student section because we're in everything school. So we're trying to get a student section going with that. And then I also want to say thank you all so much for breakfast last week. By the next breakfast, we should be able to introduce you all to our new SJA president. So that's pretty much all I have. Thank you. Where you go?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, now is an opportunity for citizens to communicate to the council only about items on tonight's agenda. So if you have something you'd like to speak to on tonight's agenda. Now, a number of these items that some of you might be here for have public hearings attached. If that's in fact what you'd like to speak to the council, I'd ask that you wait until that time to come forward. But if there's anything else on the council that does not have a public hearing now, it'd be your time to speak. Okay. Ms. Crouch, I know we want to move forward, and we're going to adjust our schedule here. So.
If the council, if this is amenable to the council, I'd like to recommend that you consider moving item 11A, which is another item of business, up in the agenda. Is that acceptable per the chair?
I believe, yes. I believe it would be acceptable to the council, yes.
So we will take out of order, item 11A is a resolution naming the soon-to-be constructed road, road known as the Richland Connector Road, that will ultimately connect Richland Road and Martin Luther King Drive slash Alabama Highway 14, to be named the Will Beekner Parkway.
Who for?
Beekner, I'm sorry.
Second. All right. Have a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? I think it's important for us to clap. We look forward to the day the sign goes up. And Henry, I hope you have a great birthday, buddy. Is he already gone? Okay, all right. Happy birthday to Henry. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you all for being here. Okay, Ms. Crouch?
Mayor, first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, I'd like to remove 8C1.
8C1, all right. And I'd like to remove 8C4. 8C4. Anyone else on the council would like to have a consent agenda item removed? Okay, we'll take those in order. 8C1.
Item 8C1 authorizes the purchase of AstroTurf for the Auburn Soccer Complex expansion from AstroTurf Corporation in the amount of $1,751,515.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Witten, I'll turn this over to you.
I just wanted to thank the city for making this a priority. I know that we are deficient in fields, multipurpose fields in particular, and I believe that the AstroTurf, should it be approved, is a great step forward in that direction of providing fields that aren't subject to our torrential rains and finicky weather that we have. So I think it's a good move in the right direction.
I would agree with you, Ms. Witten. This is, I believe, a great service to our community to allow our children more opportunities to play on our fields, even when the weather's been inclement. So I'm thankful for the city to consider this. Anything else from the council? Got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right, Ms. Crouch, 8C4.
Item 8C4 authorizes a development agreement that includes various infrastructure improvements with FAB2 LLC and James Road LLC for the Old Sanford Development.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I'll turn this over to Mr. Griswold.
Thank you, sir. First off, I'd like to commend the city staff for working so hard to bring this development to the table. I know it's, y'all have been negotiating with the developer for quite some time, and the things that you have achieved throughout these negotiations will certainly impact the city and provide benefit to all of us for some time to come. I know we have two other agenda items on the Old Sanford area, so I'll reserve some comments for that. But this particular agreement has some pretty unique concessions from the developer, predominantly things that are off-site. These are things throughout the city that will benefit from this agreement, not just in the location of the development, but things such as widening North Donahue Drive, improvements to North Donahue and Shug, improvements to Mrs. James Hill and Farmville, future widening of Farmville, intersection improvements at Mrs. James, a dedicated right-of-way to help support the city in its traffic, in its future loop, something that we've been looking forward to for a long, long time. A lump sum payment in addition to that for other off-site street improvements. They're going to contribute funds for a future creek crossing, for a new water main, and also provide public access to the Sagahatchee Greenway. In addition to the things that are outlined there, off-site, onsite, they have contributed acreage to the Auburn City School District for a building of a future school to be determined. But in all, you know, I've not been a tremendous fan of development in the City of Auburn. I think we have made some mistakes in the past, but I believe this is a way forward. We have a planned community opportunity along a corridor that is going to develop regardless. And so I think that both the developer and the city staff should be commended for bringing this to the floor. Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you for that, for mentioning that. Kelly, I think this is a good opportunity. Whenever we were first introduced to this project, and appreciate the work session staff conducted for us, you know, I think the initial reaction, for lack of a better term, you know, was just to comment on the scale, you know, of what we're discussing here. But I think this is, as it's unfolded, shown what, you know, an opportunity we've had to partner with someone willing to make concessions and improvements that Mr. Griswold has mentioned. And, you know, as things develop and as we, you know, grow, as we are a growing community, you know, I think it highlights the opportunity that we have and not necessarily always, you know, an evil development coming in when we've got a partnership with someone that's willing to make the city as a whole better. So I just appreciate both the developer and the city staff in trying to really hammer this out over several months now.
You know, the best way that we can assist in making Auburn's future growth better for all of us is to plan it as much as possible. And this developer and our staff got together and tried to put these plans into motion. And I commend, as you two guys have said, the time and the efforts and the sacrifices that were made to make this happen, and I'm thankful for this. And I'm certainly confident that this will be a successful development, but they did a lot of things that'll benefit all of us in our community by some of the sacrifices and investments that they'll make back into Auburn. So I'm grateful for their willingness to do that, and certainly, we've got some things to make decisions on here tonight. But as Mr. Griswold said, this was a great effort of both sides coming together and getting around the table, many, many hours, to try to figure out a pathway to make this work where we could come here tonight and make these kind of decisions. So thank everybody's effort in doing that.
So this item is going to be on there that we can discuss? We're going to discuss this on the agenda? Or is this a discussion?
No, this is for the development agreement. It has been removed from the consent agenda, and we'll be voting on this just as soon as our discussion is done. But there are a couple of other items on our agenda here tonight.
The development agreement is preceding the zoning actions so that you know, I think as all of you have indicated, and we have put a summary together, we will not go over it unless you request that, but we'll hand it out to the council, it'll be available to the public. There's a huge matrix, and we have got a map that accompanies it that is independent of all the vast information that's in your packet. So I want to be, it's important that everybody understand what you've indicated. It's not the work that was put into it by all parties, it is the outcome has been key, and what staff is signaling is the council's inclined later to approve the development items and requests. This development agreement doesn't overburden the taxpayers of Auburn, having anything to do with this development, is making every attempt to pay for itself across the board with the limited tools we have in the state of Alabama. And much work has gone into it. So approving this has no bearing on what you choose to do later in the meeting. This is just a first step in a process, and it will be at the council's discretion how they proceed from there.
And I think it's important to note, since it's the development piece of this, that this won't all come online in year one. This is slated over almost a 20-year timeframe. And that's, it's easy for us to look at it at 5,000 feet, but really, we should look at it at 30,000 feet, knowing that this is something that will develop over time and as market indicates and so forth. And isn't there a maximum number of lots that can come online each year?
Mr. Cummings.
So I just, I think it's important to note, especially those in the area who live out that direction now, to know that you won't see 1,500 homes or units come online in a short order. It's staged. So 170 per year?
170 per year is the max, yes.
And again, we will have plenty of, you know, time. We'll get into the specifics of it because we have a number of things going with the development items themselves. So just clarifying for the public listening, that this is just an initial step, should you be inclined to make the zoning approvals that have been requested.
All right. Any other comments related to the development agreement? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is carried forth. All right?
Under ordinances this evening, Item 9A is a request from Blake Rice on behalf of John and Sherri Todd to annex approximately 4.83 acres of property located northeast of the City of Auburn Soccer Complex and adjacent to the silos at Conway. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its December 9, 2021 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, is there any discussion? Okay, Lindsey, the roll call.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hobie?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B1 is a request from Blake Rice on behalf of James Road LLC and FAB2 LLC to rezone approximately 679.4 acres located south of Mrs. James Road and west of Camden West subdivision from rural to development district housing. This project is known as Old Sanford. The Planning Commission failed to pass a motion recommending approval of this request by a vote of two to four at its November 9 meeting. This item was postponed from the December 21, 2021 city council meeting. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and share with us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Blake Rice with Barrett Simpson Engineering. I'd just like to echo what Councilman Griswold said, and also Councilman Hobie and Mayor Anderson himself, and I appreciate everyone's time and effort on this. Staff has been amazing to work with through this process that we've been, we've been working on almost four years now. It's been a long road, but there are very few opportunities in a city of our size to provide an opportunity for a properly planned development. And it has been our efforts to do so. I hope the council sees the results of those efforts. Properly planned community can really change how cities view development as a whole. When developments are done in a way that makes sense to everyone involved, it gives the opportunity to provide amenities, both constructed and use of natural open space areas, provide things that we don't get to see in developments when they're done, you know, 50 or 100 acres at a time. Staff has worked so hard with us on this. I believe that we've come to a path forward on this, and I'd be, I'm here to answer any and all questions that anyone from the public or the council has. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Anyone else like to address the council?
Thanks for hearing me. My name's Larry Brown. I live at 1728 Yarborough Farms Boulevard in Auburn. And I spoke with you on the phone about a week ago, and apparently, I misunderstood. I came tonight to voice objection to this development because the traffic is going to be unbelievable, whether it takes five years or 10 years, it's going to bring in 6,000 cars. And Donahue College, Richland, the Richland Loop, Farmville, they're all going to have to be four-lane highways with stoplights. There's no other way to deal with it. You won't be able to make a left turn onto College if you're coming out from an adjacent street. But I was told the decision hasn't been made, but it's obvious from your comments, the decision's already been made, so I question why I'm even here.
You're welcome anytime, Larry.
Yeah, but you see what I'm saying? I came to talk about an issue that I was told hadn't been.
We haven't made a decision yet.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else like to address the council? This time, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the council? Any questions from the council? Mr. Rice also offered to answer any questions that we might offer.
Now, are we talking about, right now, we're just talking about the zoning? Or are we talking about what's actually going there?
We're talking about the rezoning. That is.
Just the rezoning part.
That is what we are deciding right now.
I have a question for clarification from staff. You recommended denial, correct, in the beginning process of this?
The staff recommendation was for denial based on the comprehensive plan. It wasn't necessarily based on the merits of the request.
Thank you.
Can we talk about the current zoning allowable maximum units versus what this request for DDH with the proposed PDD, which is a development agreement piece? What the difference? I mean, I've done the math, but can you talk about what the current zoning allows and what, if we make, if this is approved, what the allowable units would be?
Staff would be glad to do that. And I know that, I don't want to misrepresent it, I think it was fairly close, but Jay Howell, the project manager for this request, is here, so if it'd be okay, he could probably address that more accurately than I might.
Right now, we're only referring to the DDH piece and not that moving to the planned development district. What I don't want to do is confuse, you have two actions on your agenda tonight, and one is relative, and I want to make sure Councilperson Witten's question is clear. Are you referring to how many units could be placed on the property as it stands today without this rezoning?
Correct.
And then, so there's a piece of it that is already zoned a certain way versus, so I want to be sure we're getting at the correct answer that you're seeking.
Not comparing it to what's proposed, but based on the existing zoning for the 885 acres. Sure.
And it's fine also?
I believe that is the 1,356 units.
Okay, and so if we were to approve the zoning request, then it would go down to, if it has with the proposed planned development, which was just approved, it would be 1,552 units?
That's correct.
So less than 200 unit difference. And I think it's important to note, for the public's perspective, that development would have occurred regardless of our actions this evening, and the city has an opportunity and the responsibility, I believe, to make sure that the development is to the best of the city's benefit, which I think that is what we're looking at. So 1,356 units could be zoned without, I mean, could be built without our approval because it's permitted by right, but what we're deciding tonight is to basically have better controls in place and a better plan in place for that area, which would benefit the city as a whole. So I just think it's important that the public understands that.
Mr. Foote, do you have something to add?
Might add some clarification. So on page three of four of your staff report that you were given, there's a table that Mr. Howell put together, maximum number of units for the properties. So under the current zoning today was the 1,356. If you rezone to DDH for the parcels that are being requested for DDH, that goes to
Without a planned development?
Without the PDD.
Yes.
That's just with the DDH rezoning.
And Mr. Foote, to clarify, the next agenda item with the planned development district then obligates the developer to that unit count without going back to the Planning Commission and to the city council?
That's correct. The 1,552 that was talked about.
Right, and it holds them to that number indefinitely, correct?
Yes, without another visit through the Planning Commission and city council to amend the PDD.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
So when you say 1,300 units with the rural development, I mean, it's a zoning now, okay, are you talking about, when you say units, are you just talking about homes or are you talking about commercial?
That would be homes.
Just homes.
Dwelling units.
Okay, so, and then, if it's approved for the DDH, then is that just homes?
It's just homes. When we're talking about those numbers, we're talking about dwelling units. Could be single-family home, it might be a townhome, but it's a residence.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Rice.
Yeah, Mr. Rice.
As I understand it, Mr. Thorne, the property owner, has been approached by numerous other developers that if this did not go through, that the property could be divided up into various developments along the way. So one way or another, the owner is going to address or encourage development. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. I think that would be a fair statement. The property, the current property owner has been, you know... The, the property, the current property owner has been, you know, about half of this property was part of an original development in the area. That's the reason so much of this property is currently already zoned DDH, because it was effectively going to be future extensions of the Camden Ridge subdivision. Mr. Thorne, or Dr. Thorne, has and family purchased this property for a variety of reasons. They've been using it as, as a personal recreational area for some number of years, but he's been, he's been approached many, many times over the tenure of his ownership to develop this property, but has yet to find a development plan that he was comfortable with. That, that changed when we started talking about Old Sanford. But since then, obviously, there's been a great deal of development in the area, and I think it's a fair statement to say that with or without Old Sanford, this area will now develop. It is, it's, it's going to move forward in some fashion. We hope it's Old Sanford and would love to partner with the city in doing so.
Thank you.
I, I have a question too. Okay, so I think he answered my other question. So he said a variety of different type of homes, like townhomes and I guess single family homes and that type of stuff. So, so what, what, do you have any idea what the price range of the homes going to be? I mean, are they going to be affordable or are they going to be for the rich or, I mean, you know, what, what, I don't know the other way to answer.
Yes, ma'am.
But are y'all considering any type of low to moderate income homes?
No, no specifically based low to mod units have been anticipated here. What we do have a plan to do is provide a large varying differential in home sizes and lot sizes. You get down with, there are a few townhomes located here, but then there are some small detached rear alley homes, but then you go all the way up into some really large estate type lots. What we, what we found over the years, this is not a, this is not considered to be a single builder development. This is a development that's geared towards, towards everyone, really. There's a, so many builders that, you know, growing up in this area, you know, I, I've seen that built in Auburn for a significant amount of time and currently are not building inside the city of Auburn right now. They are building in other places simply due to lot availability. Those lots aren't available unless you are the developer, because the trend has become developer builder. So what we're trying to do is develop a, develop a subdivision that will cater to lots of different builders and provide some variability within itself.
But, but you can't just say right now probably what the homes are going to start at?
No, ma'am. I couldn't.
While Mr. Rice is up here, does anybody else have a question?
I have a question. I don't know if it'd be for Mr. Rice or Ms. Crouch. What are we planning on doing about the traffic? Any improvements that are slated for the increased traffic in that area?
There's a number of improvements that the development agreement somewhat outlined, some of the timeframes, and I'll have City Engineer Fraser or Development Services Executive Director Scott Cummings weigh in. There's a number of improvements, a lot of which you would see in the development agreements, which you previously approved, that would talk about they're making contributions to the city and the city will, will then turn around and make a lot of those improvements. Because part of it is we're collecting fees from a number of adjacent subdivisions for improvements to, to things like Farmville and Donahue and others. The city engineer will kill me if I get the wrong timeframe on Donahue widening, but it is, was it medium range? Did I get that right this time? In the citywide traffic study, which is in the five to seven year timeframe or so, she'll hear a lot from me about that, but I want to remind you, we have a lot of three lane roads in Auburn that have tremendous capacity. The peak hour capacity, you can traverse streets in almost all of your wards that at 5:00 PM are not operating at their best level, and that is normal. So the Donahue widening, when, when the traffic count numbers are there, will happen. I anticipate the intersections will see improvement prior to some of the road widenings. And that would namely be, we've already seen stop signs at, at Farmville and Donahue that will morph into as soon as a traffic signal warrants. You know, we have that in the budget today to put a traffic signal up with the new elementary school opening. It may cause that to warrant sooner, and we talked about that. That would be, we would actually put a signal up before we improve the intersection. So a number of things will be happening, and this is when traffic studies say they need to happen or we're seeing data, any empirical data that we have otherwise that justifies it to meet also some liability and safety things, we will do them at the appropriate time. To be clear, though, the developer is also installing things like turn lanes that go into the development, you know, at the time that they need to install those. So many improvements will be going on, but they'll be going on over a 20-year period. Major intersection realignments, things like Farmville and Mrs. James Road have to get realigned. That's a strange intersection, but much is going on. And so you'll see that, the exact timing of which is going to depend a little bit on the development schedule of this, this particular development and adjacent developments, what's going on at the preserve and what's going on out on Pear Tree Road or other things past some of this. So it's a timing thing, but yes, many improvements, some will be made directly by them and some will be made by the city. The one caveat I have is our developers are doing a wonderful job of monopolizing the time of our earthmoving and roadbuilding contractors. So I say that with one caveat, the city will do its absolute best, but we have to get it, get in the mix with everybody else who's demanding time of a limited group of people that, that build roads. So we are challenged, as you've seen throughout the city, to get a number of our infrastructure and intersection improvements done by how busy the contractors are that do that. So we're doing everything we can to remedy that, but that is a, a point where we just have a limited group of businesses that do that work, and they're very, very busy, which is good for them, but challenging for everybody who needs their services, so.
If this doesn't fully develop over 20 years and the property owners piece off, sell off, are they going to still be held to the restrictions that we're putting in place here today for the future development?
Absolutely. Much work has gone in, and actually, yeah, it's, this, why this isn't about an adjacent development, the preserve, one of the challenges is the preserve development agreements have all sunset. They're, they're past their time, and we are at a, at a place where some things won't be moving. We've had a number of changes of, of ownership, and one of the things, and again, working with the Old Sanford folks, we're surviving time and LLCs and partnership changes. We've made a lot of specific language changes to try to adjust for that because market conditions can fluctuate tremendously and cause delays as they have. The preserve has, has seen many fluctuations in the economy and ownership challenges within partnership groups. So that's anticipated in here, and I think Mr. Cummings will tell me if I missed something on that. Okay.
Chief, I didn't know if you were through. Did you have?
I am, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. Lindsey with the roll call?
I would like to just say, I do appreciate the work that's gone into this development. I think the, the vision is sound and, and attractive in a lot of ways. However, I, I won't be supporting this simply because if anyone pays attention to my voting record, I tend to vote in support of our documents that are already in place. I support our ordinances, our planning documents, and I support the, generally, I will support the, the determination of staff and the planning commission. I appreciate your work, but I will be standing by the documents that this city has already established.
Any else? Lindsey?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
No.
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item 9B2 is a request from Blake Rice on behalf of James Road LLC and FAB 2 LLC to apply the planned development district overlay to approximately 885.05 acres of property with a base zone of development district housing located south of Mrs. James Road and west of the Camden West subdivision. This project is known as the Old Sanford Planned Development District. The Planning Commission failed to pass a motion recommending approval of this request by a vote of one to five at the November 9th meeting. Pay careful attention to this piece. If the council is inclined to approve this request, staff is recommending that the conditions, a number of conditions be added in your packet that were, they're in this executive summary in your packet for your consideration. And I want to explain quickly what that means is because the Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this, they didn't move conditions through to the city council. We talked about this just a little bit and briefly on December 21st. Those conditions are in your packet. We are happy to go through them and why, and then also I do want to just signal that the developer is in agreement to the vast majority of them. Blake, there may be one or two things you have a small comment on, and so I want to be clear that we're doing this. This is very unusual, and this is not something that I've dealt with in my 25 years on the city staff. And the reason is because the Planning Commission did not initially recommend approval. Conditions did not carry through. They were included with what they looked at, but you, when you don't recommend approval, you're not adopting staff conditions with it. So Mr. Foot is prepared to run through those with you at any point in time you wish, and we do have a slight modification too. I believe it is item number two, where it just says the proposed school site should be more centralized to the development. We have a slight change to that. We'll go through with you when you're ready. And I'll tell you, that comment is always born out of the, the city staff, and those of us who are city planners believe that elementary schools should be central to a neighborhood, which is a different philosophy than Auburn City Schools have, and they have rezonings to consider and balancing of schools and other things. So that's why it's a, it's a pure planning comment, and Mr. Foot can explain later, and we'll have Mr. Rice weigh in. I want to make sure that you guys are clear where the developer stands, and we'll tell you, there's, there's one minor rub point that I'm aware of unless Blake brings up another one, and we'll go over that with you. It's up to you if you want to do this before the public hearing or after.
I'll introduce the ordinance with the conditions, the proposed conditions, and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Right, have a motion second. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing no one, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? And maybe Ms. Crouch will start with the previous topic.
Would you like to, Mr. Foot, to run through the conditions and then?
Think that would be appropriate.
We'll have him run through. We do have a revised paper, revised terms, and it's, it's just, Steve, is that, that's item number two, and what was the other?
Item number, yeah, item number two has been revised as of today. Nothing else has been changed from what you received in your packet. I believe that-
It's number three that Mr. Rice would like to speak to.
That's exactly right.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll get into that. We'll have Mr. Foot run through all of them with you, so you can ask questions of Mr. Foot, of the planning director, and then at your pleasure, if you'd like the applicant to speak, I know he does have concerns about number three, and he's, and again, we're communicating regularly, but I want to be sure you're clear on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So I, I would like to just point out that if you do proceed in, as was mentioned, there's a motion tonight to approve this. In addition to the conditions of approval that are in your report in the executive summary, there's also the exhibits. And so you have three exhibits also in that executive report, exhibit A, B, and C. So a motion, if anyone makes a motion tonight, you'll want to say to include the exhibits and the conditions as a part of the approval.
We're going to bring the revised conditions to you. Yeah.
So as those are being passed out to you, if you want me to read each and every one of those, I can, or if you want me to just stop at each one and see if you had a question, because you, you may have already had time to review all those. Only number two has changed, so.
Why don't you just go through and give us your comments on each one? I think it would probably be-
Okay. So number one is just speaking to a connection to the adjacent property east of Phase 10. Phase 10, I believe, is on the east side of the development, and so we're talking about a connection through to the, to the right. There's some property off to the east that is not entirely landlocked, but it's, it's partially difficult to access. And so as with most applications that we look at, we like to provide for cross, cross connections. And so that's what number one is speaking to. So that's a normal comment, I would say.
What does that tie in to?
The property on the east?
I, I see Camden is the north, and then there's a-
I think it's a vacant piece of property just below Camden.
Okay.
Does that sound right? Yeah.
Undeveloped?
Undeveloped. There's a piece undeveloped there, yes. Okay. Number two, previously just suggested that the school site be more internalized into the development as opposed to abutting Mrs. James Road. And so, as was mentioned already, that was mostly a, really a planning consideration, and part of that consideration would be to control access. And so, you know, if you can get access for all the traffic that maybe goes to the schools in the morning and keep it off of your primary roads, that was part of the consideration as well. So the revision that you have has been reworded. It says the proposed school site should be more central to the development, or access to and from the site shall be provided internal to the development and not from Mrs. James Road or the future outer loop. Limited access to Mrs. James Road may be considered during DRT as an entrance only or exit only if the city engineer's criteria is satisfied.
It does say should and not shall.
It has should for the be more centralized, yes. And so they have an option. If they, if they don't determine a way to internalize it more, then they're limited in where they can have access unless they go through that process and prove that the impacts are acceptable.
Now, one of our challenges is traversing the city in the morning on an, or afternoon on an arterial road to get from subdivision to subdivision or work to home. You go by a lot of schools, and our citizens have much to say about it, and the city staff hears regularly as our police do and so on, and this is, this is merely a staff recommendation. And of course, the, the school board ultimately has a say so in where the sites go, but I, you know, I want to be very clear as to why the staff would be recommending that and what our, what our view is. We're also trying to respond to what we're hearing from our citizens and their concerns about location of schools.
And so how would, if this is property that they're donating to the school, how, how do we make this bound to the school making this more centralized versus the developer?
I believe ultimately, the mayor and I have been talking, we're going to begin having some quarterly meetings with the superintendent and maybe a few key school board members, and I think that might be a topic for some council members, if that's something of your interest. Auburn City Schools is one of our biggest assets and certainly heavily funded by the city, and they have a lot of things they need to do, but we're also acknowledging here and pointing out that we're trying to address overreaching concerns we've heard for many years. So I think it's, it's a discussion we can have, but they also, I understand from a policy perspective, are very challenged by school zoning. They're rezoning now or have been, and, you know, there's much discussion about a neighborhood kind of having ownership of a school when other neighborhoods go to that school. So they're, you know, they've got very, very good reasons doing, and I think it's worth a conversation if the council is so interested.
The proposed school, is it a elementary school or?
I don't believe it's been decided yet.
It hasn't been decided. We do have a letter from the schools that is, we asked them, and they've made it clear that they would be willing to accept this property, but they haven't indicated what they would do with it or when they would do something with it, just because they don't know until we see build out of other areas and, and so on. So definitely have indicated that they would, would utilize it at some point, but for what hasn't been determined. But it's a, how many acre site?
25 acres.
Which is usually an elementary sized site, yeah.
Too small for a high school.
Too small for a high school, and for a junior high or middle school typically take up more acreage due to athletic space.
Okay.
Okay.
On that one, shouldn't we have some, some language in here that says that, what the role of the school district is on number two? I mean-
That's why it says should instead of shall. It's an ask, not a, not a demand, not an absolute requirement. So if the developer can't work that out with the schools, it can remain where it is. But with the length of, of time with this development and, you know, hope for consideration of, of how we're dealing with traffic and also not having kids traverse an arterial road to get to school is usually a desirable thing from our lens.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Thank you, sir. All right, number three, the ISR, that's impervious surface ratio, shall only apply to townhouses and single family units with 50-foot frontages identified as millhouses in the major development plan, master development plan. And, and this is the wording of the condition that went before the Planning Commission, and it wasn't until after Planning Commission packet was sent out that a revision to that was submitted by the applicant to staff, and we really didn't have a serious talk about it until probably just last week. probably just last week. And so we thought everything was, was, you know, in agreement between staff and the applicant. So this is something new that we've been talking with them about. What the applicant would like to do is modify that to have the impervious surface ratio. And it's a bump up of 20% to go not just to 50-foot wide lots and smaller and narrower width, but up to 75 feet wide. And so that includes a lot more of the product that you see on the plan, instead of just the narrow area down where the townhomes would be and the limited 50-foot wide millhouses. So it expands the number of homes that that would apply to. It's a 50, goes from 50% to 70% lot coverage, basically, which for, you know, a suburban development type of thing like that, usually that's, you don't get that high of a lot coverage. So it seems excessive to staff. So he's going to present some different information for you tonight on that to explain why they're trying to achieve that. So we've left it as it was presented to the Planning Commission. Number four.
Sir, let me, if you don't mind, go over the ISR again. What is that now?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Impervious surface ratio. And so when you take a look at your lot size, you have things that you put on the lot, your driveway, sidewalks, the house, any outbuildings and things of that nature. And the totality of all those things that are impervious, water can't go through them and soak down into the ground, are what's included in your impervious surface ratio. And so normally, it's a 50% maximum. This bumps it up to 70% for those 50-foot wide lots and up to 75-foot wide lots.
Thank you.
More lot coverage, basically.
So when you say ISR incentive, what, what is the incentive part of that?
Yeah, the incentive part that I understand, it goes up 20%. So currently, for the single-family lots, it's a 50% maximum. And it would jump to a 70% maximum.
Just for those millhouses?
Well, for the millhouses is what's proposed in your report. The applicant, his latest submittal in the narrative, which is now exhibit C, asked for that to go up to 75-foot wide lots. So it would include other areas of development within the various different pods within the project.
The average home size for a 75-foot lot would be what, in your opinion?
On a 75-foot wide lot, you know, with two stories, it's easy to get, you know, 3,000 square feet. That's not a problem typically.
And it also is impacted by the floor area ratio, which is, just to confuse you further, it's your amount of square footage of your, basically your principal structure and the, and the ratio of it to the lot. And those adjust as well. So we usually have a big problem with this. Some people were finding in, say, the Moores Mill Golf Club area, depending on which section you lived in, some could have a, finish their basement and some could not because of variation. So very hard to say, but it's, on a 75-foot lot, you can get a pretty big house, depending on what a realtor counts as square footage and what we do for building code reasons. Because basements don't count by realtors and appraisals.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Number four, mixture of garages which are side-loaded or recessed and porches should be provided in conjunction with the reduced front setback incentive. All front-loaded garages shall provide a minimum of 20 feet between the garage door and any public sidewalk or right-of-way. You know, I've seen throughout my career, sometimes you get, you know, the incentive to pull houses toward the street, which is fine as long as the garage is setback enough to park a car. Sometimes you find developments where the car is blocking the sidewalk, which is a negative situation. So we want to make sure there's room to pull up and you're not blocking the sidewalk. And so that's the reason for part of that. And then it's an encouragement and inducement to try to get front porches where you activate the right-of-way in the pedestrian realm, and, you know, people are sitting outside their house. Number five, identified open and vegetated buffer areas shall preserve existing trees unless it's shown to be impractical. Tree preservation and landscaping will be reviewed during the city's DRT process, subdivision review process. So we don't have a ban on the removal of trees. But this is, again, trying to encourage the preservation of trees where you can, which will make the development a nicer place. It'll preserve a lot of green space and open space for buffers and maintain value of property as well. And all these, as far as I know, I think the applicants have no concern about any of these, just to let you know. Number six, residential building facade shall include durable materials such as brick, stucco, or fiberboard. Basically, it's like a hardy board type of material. Number seven, traffic impact study has been completed for the development and improvements warranted by the development will be outlined in the development agreement or as phases are submitted for plat approval. The development includes two collector roadways with limited access and pods accessing the collector roadways. The easternmost collector road shall extend to the property line, center line of the creek.
Steve, let me stop you right there. One of the things I don't, I think we mentioned December 21st and did not mention today is, to the surviving time question that the council had about the development agreement, we're trying to put more in the ordinance because the ordinance tracks with the development approvals. And to be very clear with everyone moving forward, we've learned over time that by not including conditions with an ordinance on a planned development district, it's very clear to the public, to people who are moving to this development, if it's approved, all of that, exactly what we were requiring and it's memorialized in one spot. So sorry to take that time out for now, but that is, hence it's such a large development, why these are very specifically outlined.
Okay.
Could I ask a question? I was just looking at this, I guess this drawing here. What is a food truck plaza?
Would you like the applicant to talk about what their plans are on that or?
You want to wait until we get through these?
Ms. Taylor, could we go, let Mr. Foot go through this list real quick and then us come back to that question?
Sure.
Is that, is that one of the?
I don't recall that being addressed in one of these conditions of approval.
Okay.
I was looking for it, that's the reason why. And I didn't see nowhere where it was.
There's something in the plan. We'll come, we'll come back to that.
Let's come back to that. We'll save that question. I'll let Mr. Foot continue on with his list here.
Okay. Let's see. Number eight, the outer loop shall be reflected on the master plan. And they have added a representation of the outer loop. As part of the platting of phases adjacent to Mrs. James Road, additional right-of-way will be required to accommodate the future outer loop. Number nine is pods are submitted for development. Lot layouts shall be provided before platting to assess connectivity and access to the roadway network. Number 10, the development plan shall include a connector, excuse me, connections to the city's Blue Way, Green Way. And many of those are already shown. This, this latest plan that you have, some of these elements have been added to it. The location and configuration of this connection to be determined during the DRT process. Developer to design and construct access facilities. So we want to make sure that, that this is not just something you see on a plan, but actually when the development is, you know, constructed and things are put in place, there actually are physical improvements where people can actually enjoy those amenities and get to, get to the creek. Number 11, the master development plan demonstrates connectivity to adjoining property as is required. The developer needs to anticipate phasing the development to include a secondary access to an existing public street before 200 lots are platted. The development review team will review each submittal for additional warrants for connectivity as needed to efficiently convey residents and deliver public services to the neighborhood. Mostly, they're looking for a second point of ingress and egress before too much development occurs. Number 12, direct access to the collector roads is by residential lots or dwellings shall not be allowed. Lots shown adjacent to a collector street shall be accessible from a rear alley or internal local street. So in other words, you have lots that back up to Mrs. James Road. There's no connectivity from those individual lots to that roadway. So we're prohibiting access for good traffic flow and so forth. I'd say, I think that was 12, right? So number 13, should city council approve this development, an updated MDP will be required within 90 days, reflecting all staff conditions contained herein, as well as any additional conditions of approval as specified by the city council.
Does the council have any specific questions related to these conditions that Mr. Foot just went through with us? Any specific questions related to this?
On the open and vegetated buffer preservation on number five, one, that's to hopefully avoid clearcutting of the property. And two, is there a way to make that a little bit stronger language so that they, because this says, well, this says shall. So I guess that's the appropriate word.
And the intent of that, if I can kind of respond to your question, there are areas on the master plan that are green, right? So part of what I would be looking for as staff would be to say, hey, when, when a pod comes in for development, first of all, I'm going to be looking at those green areas and saying, did you preserve, did you provide, for instance, limits of disturbance on those plans so that people don't accidentally or otherwise go and encroach into those areas and just clearcut that area? The, the other leg of that, I guess, as you've pointed out, is that beyond that, it says, let's see, identified open and vegetated buffer area shall be preserved, or shall preserve existing trees unless shown to be impractical. We don't have a tree protection or preservation ordinance in the city per se. And so this was just an attempt to say, look, you've got this, this plan you've put together. We want to maintain, we don't want 885 acres clear cut and everything knocked down to where all the new vegetation is brand new and it takes 20 years for it to grow and look good again. So if you can preserve vegetation as you go through these processes, staff's going to be asking the developer to show us areas where that can be done.
As new pods come on, will this be, you're talking about this going through the DRT, is that going to be a one, one-off at the beginning? Or is this going to be as new pods come on, let's look at landscaping and tree preservation in each development?
Pod by pod. Yeah, pod by pod. And, you know, I would say this in response to your question, though. If you feel like that is looser than you prefer for it to be, of course, the city council can modify any of these conditions. You can delete them, you can add your own conditions, you can strengthen the condition if you so see to do that.
Any other specific questions related to the conditions?
And then one last question, if I may. Number 13, it says, "An updated master development plan within 90 days." Does that mean that an updated master development plan comes back to this body to be approved a second time?
No, it would be one that reflects the conditions herein. It, to the extent, there are things that the developer can't reflect. These are conditions that come later. But, and a lot of these, if I'm understanding correctly, developer did, did a lot of work between the postponement of this item. And, and present, we had a little over a month to actually address a number of these things already in the plan. So I don't expect a lot of major changes coming with the revised plan. And this is also, again, because it's tracking with the ordinance, part of this is, there is memorialized in one spot and no confusion where all these conditions are at the time we started. Now they'll adjust over time. That's inevitable.
So has condition three been resolved? Or is that something we need to, I mean, do we need to hear from Mr. Rice on their proposal as to the change?
That's correct. Yes, sir. The condition as included here is what staff had presented to the Planning Commission. And we didn't get enough information to say that we felt comfortable with changing it to the 75 feet. And it was also very late in the review process before it came to you. So we haven't fully been able to grasp or understand the extent and reasoning for their request. So the applicant will ask you to change that today to, again, allow up to 75-foot wide lots instead of 50-foot wide lots unless.
Ms. Crouch, what would be your recommendation, how we move forward with item three?
If you're on that question and want to hear from the developer now, that's certainly at the council and chair's discretion. If you want to answer Ms. Taylor's question or if you want to put this matter, you know, go ahead while you're talking about it.
I'd like to stay with these conditions and finish that first, so.
Absolutely. And that's, that's it. Your, your rules say you can invite anybody to answer questions, including the applicant, whenever you wish.
Okay. Mr. Rice, would you please come forward and address this? Item number three on the conditions.
Absolutely. Thank you. Since the discussions with staff to today, we've, we've put a lot of effort into trying to establish exactly what was going to be necessary for the project. And when the incentives, the way the incentives and exchange program is set up in the zoning ordinance, it, it kind of reads more of an all or nothing thing. So the, the incentive that was requested was the 20% ISR increase. Since that time, completely understand planning staff's concern, nor do I want to go in and take a 80-foot wide lot and cover it 90% with, with impervious surface. So what we've looked at it is where, where we typically run into issues with ISR. And the, the area that we, that we run into more issues than ever is in the 60 to 70-foot range. But they're small issues. They are, they're, they're minute. So what I would like staff to actually kind of weigh in on would be a proposal for us to leave this condition as it sits for the 20% increase and allow a 5% increase from the 50 to 75-foot range and nothing above that.
So again, from 50 to 55%?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. And that would, that would really cover the, the issues that we have. But with the request, it was just kind of a, an overall 20% request, because that's, that's what's in the exchange program.
Sure. Okay.
So to understand, recap, please, thanks. So to understand, you keep it at 20% for townhomes and units of 50-foot frontages and below. And then 55, up to 55% for 60 to 75?
Yes, ma'am.
Lots. Okay.
And then cap it. No, no additional incentive above, above that 75-foot lot.
All right. Ms. Crouch, could we get a reaction from?
Mr. Foot?
Yes. Yeah, I think based on that explanation and that, that's much more of a reasonable request and ask, I would be able to support that.
Yeah. All right. So now that we have a motion and a second, how do, do we need to revise our motion related to that, Ms. Crouch?
I would say that I would, I'd just amend it. I would move to amend when you guys are ready to get to that and move to amend to adjust that condition. Because if I understood Mr. Smith's motion correctly, it was to approve it with, with staff conditions. And we do need to clarify, and he can clarify, if it was the revised conditions, because the, the school item was, was revised slightly. But we can also just amend to reread, to say that numbers two and three have been amended as follows. And that's, that's a way to do it as well.
Okay. All right. So we'll finish our discussion as we move forward.
Yeah, I think get everything on the table that you want to talk about. And then when you get ready and are closer to, to voting, we can get to amending.
Okay. We'll move forward now that we've discussed the conditions. And Ms. Taylor, you had a question I want to come back to with you.
Well, I was just trying to figure out, I was looking at this drawing, and I was trying to figure out what is a food truck plaza. And I saw some pictures here. I guess-
I'm going to invite Mr. Rice to come back forward and, and address that question for you, Ms. O.
He's getting his steps in tonight.
To. This is an, the food truck plaza, you really just don't know what else to call it. A growing trend in master plan communities is for the HOAs to have days where they, they have some kind of function in their large open amenity sites. A lot of them like to invite food trucks in for the day. They may have some type of, you know, localized fare going on or inflatables or something going on. And they invite food trucks in. And what we try to do is look at an area in the parking area that we can kind of tailor for those days where they come in that can be blocked off for food trucks to park and service the community.
Oh, okay. I, I was thinking that you, the food trucks was just going to be there.
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
So you would envision having like electrical outlets and water?
Right. Yes, ma'am. Kind of, kind of looking, a lot of the food trucks are self-contained.
Right.
But you, when you design the parking area, you, you take a look at how they can fit in and how you could, how you could adequately, you know, cut a parking area off for the day and get food trucks parked in there and have pedestrians all around them without, you know, safety concerns, things like that.
And I, I may have missed this, but would this be open to the public or just those that are members of the, or owner, property owners?
It would be on the development amenity site. So it would be a, a localized HOA function.
Gotcha. And is that similar to the rec fields as well I've seen the layout?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you.
We might be calling you again. Any other thoughts or questions from the council? Okay. Mr. Smith, I think we need, to move forward, we need an amendment?
If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to clarify amendment. And it would be, sorry, my mask is caught on my earring, which is my lucky day. I'd like to clarify number three to make sure that, that we're tracking this right. If somebody was going to restate it, it would say, "The ISR incentive shall only apply to townhouses and single-family units with 50-foot frontages identified as millhouses in the NDP, MDP for 60 to 70-foot lots." Did we say 70? Or was it 75-foot lots?
Actually, 71.
Huh?
75. I thought 75.
Yeah, for 60 to 75-foot wide lots, the maximum ISR shall be .55. Was that right?
Just a maximum 5% increase.
A maximum 5% increase. Okay. So what you would be considering, if you're considering an amendment, is just to amend, to revise conditions two and three. And I would read two as is on the post sheet. And then three would, would just include the addition of for 60 to 75-foot wide lots. and then three would, would just include the addition of for 60 to 75-foot wide lots, the maximum ISR shall be, well, the ISR shall be a maximum of a 5% increase.
An additional 5% increase.
Okay.
Do I need to, can I amend my own motion? Or do I?
Yes, you can. It's in order.
Well, in that light, I'd like to amend the motion regarding adopting the ordinance with the conditions that were proposed by planning to include the changes listed in this for items number two regarding the proposed school site shall be, should be more central to the development or access to and from the site shall be provided internal to the development and not from Miss James Road or the future outer loop. Limited access to Miss James Road may be considered during DRT as an entrance only or exit only if the city engineer's criteria, criteria is satisfied. And second, item three, the ISR incentive shall only apply to townhouses and single-family units with 50-foot furnages identified as millhouses in the MDP and for 60 to 75-foot frontages with a lot max ISR of a 5% increase from there. Is that pretty good?
That's what I have.
I would, just one point of clarification, and it is the city planner and me, what about lots between 50 and 60 feet? Did you mean for it to read that way? Because literally, they're in no man's land.
I thought that increase was for 50.
I'll read.
Okay, for, for 50 to 75 feet, that's.
Really everything less than 75 feet down to 50.
Yeah. Sorry, but we, otherwise, we'd have to come back and re-advertise the whole thing. So there we go.
50 to 75 with a 5% increase.
All right. So Mr. Smith just read an amended motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion as seconds. Anybody have a problem moving forward with this? Okay. Here in nine, voice vote at this point in time? All right, we'll take our vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
No.
Bitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
All right. Item 9B3 is a request from Brett Baskin on behalf of PSM Alabama Holdings LLC and TD Development Incorporated to amend the Hamilton Place Plan Development District for property located at the northeast corner of Moores Mill Road and Hamilton Road. The amendment would include the incorporation of an additional 4.21 acres to add 33,000 square feet of office space and change the classification of the shopping center from a neighborhood shopping center to a community shopping center. The planning commission failed to pass a motion recommending approval of this request by a vote of two to four at its November 9th meeting. This item was postponed from the December 21st, 2021 city council meeting. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion as second, seeing whether the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Seeing a hearing now, we'll open the public here, and if you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Wells, 1115 Blackman Circle, Bend Creek subdivision. I would like to ask you all, thank you for your time, like you to all vote no for the change in the zoning for four main reasons. One, being the comp plan 2030 has it stated as a residential area, not a business area. Secondly, what was already mentioned, the planning commission recommended not to approve to change the zoning. Number three, environmental. It's interesting, you all have a term for it, the ISR. There is a pond in Bent Brook with a stream going along that property that feeds into that pond. We don't know how that development is going to affect that pond, whether it's going to drain it or dry it up, I should say, or whether it's going to flood it. And that would drastically change, you know, home values and things that need to be done for that, for our community. And then lastly, for safety, school buses, young drivers coming in and out of that neighborhood onto Moores Mill, it's not the safest. There has been accidents. One of them was a rollover, I've mentioned to you all before. The main thing about this area is that this property is at a low spot, as is the drive in and out of Bent Brook, and it rises up to hills on either side at a very short distance, roughly 75 yards, and cars flying over that. You have a very short time to adjust and to evaluate whether you're going to pull out or you're going to sit there. And this is at all times of the day that this occurs. And safety is a very big thing in our neighborhood that we're very concerned about with this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all very much for your service. I'm Ernie Merritt. I live at 2492 Glenbrook Drive. I am asking, and coming before you, asking for a no vote for this development as well with many different reasons, but I want to share a couple of things with you tonight, if you will spare me the minute. First of all, public safety is my number one concern. Public safety in that area has gotten extremely dangerous. We can look at, we can look at all the traffic studies, we can look at all of the various different reports that come out, but unless you live in that neighborhood, you don't understand what the safety issues are. I live in it, I know what it's like to pull out into that area, and adding a development at the size of this development with the number of cars that are directly across, as mentioned before, that would create some serious concerns for us, obviously create a lot of concern in the requests that we've asked. As you think about public safety, I've asked, as I've met with folks that live in the East Lake community, which is just south of us or just below us, as well as those folks that live close to us up on the Moores Mill side, which is just north of the intersection. I call that north-south, whether you call it east or west, we all know the interstate's thrown off in the city of Auburn. But at any rate, what they will tell you is they don't go out on to Moores Mill Road. They all have an option. East Lake residents pull out and go all the way around to Ogletree. They did, they added, literally added roadblocks or speed bumps to slow down the traffic coming around and going that way because everyone goes out for the same exact safety concern that we have. If you live in Moores Mill, whether you live on the, either side of the Moores Mill, the old original or the new side, the new side can go around Rock Fence Road, they go up to Rock Fence, they turn on Ogletree, come back to the light, and then turn down Moores Mill when they're traveling in this high density area of traffic. If you come out of the old Moores Mill, you go out and you go on to Hamilton Road and come to the same intersection. We don't have that option. No one in our neighborhood has any option other than to sit there and fight this dangerous intersection that is only going to get worse. The land plan, as you all have heard numerous of times, numerous times, I don't need to talk about that. I know in previous meetings, as I've participated in other meetings, to learn more about the council and the process, there's been discussion around whether the comp plan is current because of the growth of the city. If it's not, let's suspend this or decline it until there's a new one that says something If you move on, one of the things that was brought up as well, we talked about a planned development or PDD. Mayor, you spoke briefly just a minute ago about a planned DD, a planned, a PDD and how well it should work and how it should be planned together as a group, coming together as a development and as a board, putting a plan together for a long-range plan. That has not happened here. That has not happened at all. The community shopping center rating that Ms. Crouch spoke about, it does move this over to 100,000, over 100,000 square feet with the Publix. Now that brings into a new range of 100 to 500, if I'm not mistaken. So there is an opportunity that someone could do the exact same things these developers are asking you to do and come before you and ask to expand next to the property next to it as it grows. I asked many of you that question that I spoke to. It's complicated and it is difficult to answer, but there is always a chance that someone could buy the property next door to this development and put a Target or a Dollar General or whatever it might be to even make it worse. Because now you are moving it from a 100 to 500,000 range, calling it a community shopping center. And I'm hopeful that I'm correct with exactly as I've described that, as I know Ms. Crouch explained. It's very difficult to answer that, there are some legalities, but they could become or come in front of the council and request a similar change. The original planning zone, they've come across, this, of course, has come to you multiple times, as each of you are aware. The first time it came, it was defeated by this council. It was approved by planning, but it was defeated by this council. The second time, it went back in front of you because they made a change and moved the road. When the road was moved, it was denied, declined by the planning department or planning commission, and it was denied by you as well. We waited the year time that's allowed, and then it's come back to you. It is the exact same thing you saw the first time that you declined. There are no changes to it. So therefore, they're asking you again to approve something that you've already said no, and I've already declined. The planning commission did decline it. I know it was brought up, there were several members missing. There were two, I believe, missing, if that was the case, from what I understand. That would have made it a tie vote. I didn't have it as a three to two.
Actually, Mr. Merritt, I think it was two, four, right?
Two, four.
Yeah. So there's nine, nine on the planning commission.
Okay. So obviously, we don't know how the others would vote, but we, they did decline it. I know many of you have had to miss. It's unfortunate when it has to happen, but there are reasons why that happens in our lives, but obviously, we have to live with those votes. I'll, I'll end by a couple of things. One, I spoke to one of you that made a very, very enlightening statement to me. They called it almost like making you a gymnast. And I'll close with this. Last week, I sat through this, this meeting in this very room and watched the presentation, and I obviously spoke to many of you personally or wrote you about my concerns of how you were treated. You were attacked in my, in many cases, all of you, one way or another. I don't have any ideas about how all of the zoning maps work, but what I was impressed with is how you handled it, how you supported the city manager, how you supported the city staff. You supported all the hard work they have done, and you supported everything you did. I close and ask you to do the same thing tonight. They recommend a no vote, and I would ask that you do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Who would be next?
There we are. My name is Greg Justice, and I live at 2580 Glenbrook Drive, and that's across, in Auburn, and that's across the street from the development that we're talking about in Bent Brook subdivision. Everything that Ernie said, I reiterate, my wife and I, which she couldn't attend tonight's traveling, we ask all of y'all to absolutely vote against this development, as you've done in the past. We're against it for all the reasons, for the safety. It really is a difficult intersection coming out of our neighborhood, and the one thing about it, we talk about our kids, and some of our kids are in college, mine are, but I'm getting older. And to be honest with you, I look left, I look right, I look left, and, and I, I travel a lot still, and I've been really close a few times with probably nearly a million and a half miles under my belt driving. But this has been going on for well over a year, and we've talked about property rights, you know, the developers' rights to rezone to accommodate versus the existing property owners. And, and that's a good question, because when we built our house there, we knew, we looked into the, the 2030 plan, the planning commission, what that was planned for, and we didn't plan for this. Otherwise, we would not have built there. It's a big deal. I can't speak for any of, any of y'all here, but I really think anybody on that side of this podium that's standing here would not be for this development if it was across the street from your subdivision, for many reasons. Now, I've lived here a long time, and a lot of y'all have too, and the, the planning commission, the council, everybody works hard to make sure that everything that we're developing is going to be good for the city in the long run. And even with all that hard work, we've had a few misses. I think everybody knows the spots in the city that we, that just didn't turn out like it should have. And what I'm asking here is to keep our, our subdivision safe and to please not let this side of Moores Mill Road, which is one of the most beautiful roads in the city, turn into another eyesore. And I think this would be step one, if not maybe step two, heading in that direction we can't ever count on, I guess, with different elections, on what a step-down development is from this one. It's, it could continue all the way down to Society Hill Road without stepping down. And we don't really, we don't really support that. And again, I want to say that, thank you for your service. I know it's hard over there. Y'all hear from people like, like us all the time, and, and I imagine it could get pretty nasty. So I'm not up here to do that, and I'm not up here to question anybody's integrity. But with this being, the planning commission's against it. The comp 2030 plan is not supporting it. So it begs the question, why would anybody support it? It should be a foregone conclusion, but the game of attrition's kicking in, and we would normally have probably 20 or 30 people here, but time. I can tell you this, that out of 37 people that I spoke with in our subdivision, they're all against this development for some of the same reasons I am. And mine's not just a matter of safety, because there are other ways to mitigate that. You can mitigate turning lanes, red lights, but you can't mitigate an eyesore once it starts. And with that said, I appreciate y'all's service, and my wife and I are strongly against it, and ask each and every one of you to vote against it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. Who'll be next?
Bob Greenhall, 2486 Glenbrook Drive, in the same subdivision these other gentlemen have been in. And I would like to begin by thanking you again for this opportunity. We've been here several times now to, to both the planning commission and the council. And for some reason, we always think, maybe this is the last time that we'll have to consider this. You, ladies and gentlemen, are in a position now of having to direct and steer our area from that gray zone. I call the gray zone gray because it's behind a major intersection there, that's the Publix intersection. And we are in a, a spot where the original council that voted on this, and some of you may have been on it, and most of you may not, I don't know. It seems as though it was right after the turn of the century at some point, I don't even know what year. But anyway, somebody, that council, somebody steered that council into believing that the gray zone ended behind CVS for sure, where our subdivision was approved, and so that's it from their own. There's no way to put any more commercial on our side of Moores Mill. But on the other side, the gray zone is still there. Now, your question to yourselves for your vote must surely consider, you must consider whether you feel like that gray zone is in a different spot than what our subdivision is. If our subdivision has already set the pace for that, when are you going to stop that gray zone? It's already been mentioned that it could keep extending one lot at a time or one area at a time, odd infan item, you know, to the potting shed, and it, it would be a fairly strange situation to see that happen. And we think, with all the problems that have been mentioned, that we have reason enough to come to you and say, please do not allow this gray zone to keep extending on the other side of Moores Mill Road, which is directly across from us. Safety concerns, all of it. I have one other thing, which is, I'm kind of the pond colorant guy in my neighborhood. So I watch that pond every day, actually. And I go to my, sit at my kitchen table, and I can see it. And we want to stay in our house, you know, just like these guys do, until we can be, we can exit in a horizontal position right on out of here. And we love Auburn. This Tommy Goff used to say, "I think I'm going to die and go to Auburn." You know, that's how much he loved it. And a lot of you know who Tommy Goff is, dear friend of mine, and I know of yours as well. So I do feel like that we need to stop the gray zone. It's been stopped everywhere else in that, on that intersection. This is it, the last holdout. We want to please can stop it right. This Tommy Goff used to say, I think I'm gonna die and go to Auburn. You know, that's how much he loved it. And a lot of you know who Tommy Goff is, dear friend of mine, and I know of yours as well. So I do feel like that we need to stop the gray zone. It's been stopped everywhere else in that, on that intersection. This is it, the last holdout. We want to please can stop it right where it is and make this all residential. Across from us should be residential, on that side of Moores Mill, as well as our side, all the way to the potting shed beyond, who knows? So thank you very much for your time, your consideration, and we hope that you will think through what we've said. I know you will, and consider it as a no vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhalgh. And you're exactly right, Tommy Goff was one special guy. Who will be next?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. My name's Andrew Price. I live at 2575 Glenbrook Drive in Bent Brook subdivision. First, I'd like to acknowledge the stressful, redistricting effort that the city just undertook. There were many conversations that were difficult, and I send everyone uplifting prayers and love. I would also like to thank Mayor Anders and the council and Parks and Rec for the continued support of soccer in Auburn and the recent initiation of the next development phase at the soccer complex. I have basically raised my two teenage daughters since they were four years old, and I tease my, there, and I tease my colleagues, I should have gotten a PhD in turf grass science instead of crop science, as I spend so much time at the soccer complex. Also, thank you for the new roundabout at Wyre and Cox and traverse this intersection often traveling there. The reason I'm here is to ask you to vote no against the Hamilton Place PDD. I have three main concerns about rezoning the property across the street from my neighborhood Bent Brook. First, the concern for additional garbage this development will likely generate on the roadside that blows into our neighborhood walkway, entranceway, stream, and ultimately our neighborhood pond. Our neighborhood families already pick up an unacceptable amount of roadside trash from the current Hamilton Place development. Its sources are easily identifiable because most of the garbage bears names of the businesses found within the shopping center. Our Bent Brook HOA pays over $1,000 a year as a line item in our budget specifically for picking up trash on our neighborhood walkway and entryway. I sent Mayor Anders and the city council pictures of the garbage and recyclables I picked up at lunchtime yesterday along the roadway directly in front of our neighborhood. From what I have witnessed, whatever leaf litter and trash a street sweeper cannot pick up, the Hamilton Place leaf blower crew blow through the parking lot and out onto the street, property edges, and the stormwater detention area that drains to our neighborhood. Second is how adding this new development and making such a large development will impact my property value negatively because it is such a dissimilar use and aesthetic from my neighborhood, also impacting my property value, how much of an increase in noise and light pollution will this neighborhood, will this new development bring to my neighborhood? Last and most importantly to me, I'm greatly concerned about the increased traffic this development will bring to the immediate area and the increased use of the Publix rear entrance, which will create unsafe conditions in front of our neighborhood. It is already extremely difficult to turn left out of our neighborhood in the morning and afternoon due to the high volume of traffic, limited site distance, and traffic speed. This development will make it even more difficult and dangerous as the entrance to the development is immediately adjacent concerning decisions on when to enter Moores Mill from Bent Brook. The proposed development would result in decision and reaction time and car volume interactions that are, will be understandably, undeniably create unsafe conditions. I'm very concerned how dangerous this will be for my family of drivers, including my daughters, one of which started driving in October. Thank you for your consideration of my concerns. Please vote no on the Hamilton Place PDD.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Who will be next? Anyone else for the public here? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gregory Forto. I live at 2547 Glenbrook Drive in the Bent Brook subdivision, and I will say I'm proud of my neighbors for being professional and keeping it classy. My wife and I would like for you guys to deny this application in several reasons. First of all, like was stated before, it's the same application that was voted on. I just want to make sure you guys understand that. And really, the same issues I had before were use and safety. And I'll try and be brief, as you guys have heard a lot of this, and actually have met, most of you have met me out there to, to look at the situation. As a, as someone who's been in the planning and development industry for the last 20 years, I've seen a lot, and really, I've tried to boil it down to use and safety. As you know, this is an LDD zoning, and it is not a permitted or even a conditional use for LDD zoning. So the developer has to co-op basically the PDD designation on the adjacent property. PDDs typically are done to allow for more flexibility for the developer, but at the same time, provide the Auburn community with a very comprehensive planned out situation. And I would actually, I think staff did a great job. The goal of a planned development, this is a quote from them in their assessment, the goal of a planned development is that of, that, is that all of its aspects, buildings, varying land uses, parking, connectivity, et cetera, are integrated throughout the overall design, so it's not only appears as one cohesive development, but functions as one as well. The PDD amendment that is proposed as a mechanism to allow the proposed office use in the context of a shopping center, however, is not designed as an integral part of the master development plan. Accesses proposed to the service entrance for the public supermarket, based on these findings, they recommend denial. And I would agree wholeheartedly that the spirit and the intent of PDD is kind of this, this, this public trade off. The developer or property owner gets to have a lot more flexibility, but the public in general has a better idea, just as, as the previous application was earlier tonight. We saw how that can work really well. Safety is the second concern. It, it's been mentioned, it's an awkward situation. I mean, I've seen a lot of, it's an awkward configuration, using a service drive. And just so everyone is aware, understands, the reason we use service drive is when this went to the BZA back in 2008, it was told to the public and to the commu, the neighborhood across the street that this was a service drive only. So when we see this commercial use being added to that, it, it, it obviously raised some questions. And so that's why, again, staff mentioned that in their comments as well. The opposing left turn is problematic. I think the opposing left turn is a problematic issue. It's been stated, you know, we look left, we look right, but now, now you're kind of introducing another kind of element to an already pretty shaky safety situation. Does not meet safety, does not meet the city's standards from a driveway offset standpoint. And like many said, we do have a lot of young drivers, and I think that they're all getting older, and then I drive around our neighborhood, and there's still young kids playing football and everything else. City council, y'all denied it, planning commission denied it, staff denies it. I understand step down zoning. I do. I've done it for, like I said, over 20 years. But as presented on this specific site in this location, I just don't think it's appropriate. So I would ask you guys to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortover. Who will be next?
Good evening. Brett Aspin with the Forsight Group representing TD Development. Just wanted to kind of go through and hopefully address some of the comments and questions that came up. One of the things, Mr. Parsons, you brought up currently was in reference to the future land use plan and referencing going with what code or what staff recommends in their staff report. Just so we're all clear, in regards to a staff report, they don't recommend anything that would contradict the current future land use plan. They don't evaluate it on the merits of the project, similar to maybe what Sanford, Old Sanford was evaluated at. But it's basically on whether it does or doesn't meet the, the comp plan. With COVID, the most recent update for our future land use plan has not been done. So really, our future land use plan is lagging the current market sector, especially with the growth that's taken place here. You know, I would, I would tend to say that our future land use plan is out of date and really needs to be updated. I have expressed that routinely, because most of the projects that we're coming up against, that we're coming up in front of you are violate the future land use plan. Our growth boundaries and what is considered rule, with all the changes that have happened, you know, there's, we're, we're coming up and pushing those boundaries. So first off, I feel like, you know, the future land use plan, we really need this amendment, and based upon the way staff is interpreting this, I think a fine tooth, you know, it'll, it, it needs to be fine toothed and really evaluated along our fringes where some of these things take place. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, just start off with that. The future land use on this particular site is, is residential. The property to the north was residential as well, and was approved as a church contradictory to the future land use plan. We're bounded to the west by the shopping center, and to our east, we do have a creek. I know one of the things I think that concerns a lot of the citizens is, you know, this future expansion of this commercial sector further east. You know, if you look at the, within the LDD zoning, the LDD zoning was originally created for the Lake Ogletree watershed. It was a limited development district, so there's a lot of restrictions within that zoning. Now, that same LDD zoning has been applied to other parts of the city, but it was originally created and used within the conservation overlay district, which is the Lake Ogletree watershed. But when they created that, you know, a lot of our uses, for instance, office, is required, it's only allowed in the LDD zoning within the context of a neighborhood shopping, neighborhood shopping center. So if you don't have a neighborhood shopping center, you can't get that zoning. So anything along Moores Mill that is LDD, once you get into, into the Lake Ogletree watershed, you, you can't do a single freestanding 2,500 square foot office. You can only do office within the context of a neighborhood shopping center. That's why the only really office that is out there is within the Cleveland's Ogletree Village Shopping Center, and you have the CVS's shopping center there, and then you have the public shopping center. So within the neighborhood shopping center, within the LDD, you have to have a minimum three acre lot, but you also have to be located at the corner of an arterial or an arterial and a collector road. So for the neighborhood shopping designation to get expanded, there is no arterial, and there's no collector road intersecting roads east of there, until you get to the Lazy Bee, which is in the county anyways. So the, the context of that being extended down is, is, you can't. When the Publix development was originally approved, this particular parcel had a, a individual access to Moores Mill that aligned with Bent Brook. In order for this driveway to be put in at Publix, per the city requirements, we were, they, we were required for them to remove that driveway and shared access with this site. So from the very beginning, that property was always going to have to get its access through the public shopping center. Always has. That's the only way that it, it could get access, because they gave away that right to that driveway to have cross access with this. So in regards to how the PDD and the shopping center, the, the, this office has shared access with the overall shopping center. That's how it's getting its access. To be able to say that you're extending the shopping center next door and that it's integrated into the shopping center, I just don't feel like it, it, it meets the context of what the city requirements have for our neighborhood, neighborhood shopping center. So the use, like we talked about, we started out at 40,000 square feet, and expansion of the shopping center, we reduced that down to 33,000 square feet. And, you know, the, the, the same developers that are doing this are the same ones that developed the Grove Hill Business Center next, you know, between the Grove Ark Inn and the, and the daycare facility. I think you can look at that and see the quality of, of development that they do, the type of product, the type of high end tenants that they're bringing in. And so, you know, the, the thought of somebody saying that that's an eyesore, this one of the nicer looking office buildings, one of the nicer looking buildings along that corridor, that's the type of architectural continuity that, and, and, and high end stuff that this development is proposing. One of the other things is talked about the watershed and what's going to happen with this creek or this pond downstream. Your own city requirements, we have stormwater detention requirements, we're in the Lake Ogletree watershed, we have water quality requirements, we have sediment erosion control ordinances. All this stuff is governed whether you're built, whatever you're building there is to protect that pond. The same water coming off this site is the same water going into the Lake Ogletree Lake that we're pulling our, our drinking water sources. So you already have regulations in place that restrict what we can and can't do, and also add additional requirements for us to provide additional water quality for the stormwater that's running off of this site. You know, in regards to the traffic, you know, whether we do this development or we don't do this development, we can't change the, the way that their driveway interacts with the street. I think when we went through this previously, I think the city engineer, Ms. Fraser and her team evaluated the site distance, they did a speed study, they provided all this data to you guys in a memo previously that basically stated that this was a safe condition for this driveway. You know, nothing has changed between now and then that, that would contradict that. And so, you know, essentially, just wrapping this thing up, yes, it is the, pretty much the same, the same proposal as previous. We've tried to sit down with the neighbors, tried to address their concerns, tried to figure out if there's a, a middle ground, but it's, it's really, you know, kind of like an all or nothing type thing. So, you know, spent a couple hours with them yesterday, trying to come up if there was an amicable solution on what we could do to potentially change and that kind of stuff. In regards to like size of development, this is 33,000 square feet of office. You know, essentially, this development's going to produce less trips coming out of this driveway than the 50 unit neighborhood across the street. From a, from a intensity perspective, from traffic, is probably the best use you can have there. And we feel like that that use is also a nice step down from the back of a shopping center into whatever future happens to the east, whether it stays as pasture land or whether it redevelops as some form of residential or, or whatever it does. But happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Okay, I'm pulling this down a little bit. My name is Julie Moncrief. I live at 1122 Blackman Circle, also in the Bent Brook subdivision. Over, I, I do none of this by trade. I'm not a developer, a builder, a purchaser of land. So all of this I have learned in the past couple of months. I feel like it's been a steep learning curve, and I am very grateful for the time that the staff has taken explaining some things to me personally, which, you know, means a lot. You want to be involved as a citizen, and you want to understand the decisions that are being made. And I think probably that's where the beginning of this became difficult for some of the members of our neighborhood. Nothing about Publix since it began, and we lived there when it was developed, felt like a planned development. We were told certain things could happen in that development and certain things could not. For example, there would never be a gas station there, we were told, and there is a gas station. Now, I'm the first to admit that I use that gas station. I, I love it. It's convenient, and I feel like it's a, a great asset to the community. But our hesitancy on bringing up questions and points of concern are that this is not a planned development, and I was under the impression that the, the proposal was denied by planning and zoning because this office space was not designed as an integral part of the master development plan. So I think what we have here is a situation of development that's not been planned out to a lot of people's understanding. Now, some of that is because it's not what I do, and a lot of citizens don't understand the intricacies of zoning and development. So we don't want to give the impression that we're anti-development. We certainly know that property is going to be developed. We are not anti-this developer. We know the work that they do in the community, and it's beautiful. But we do have significant concerns, and because it's not- But we do have significant concerns and because it's not a part of that master development, we don't necessarily feel like we have an understanding of what all will take place in regards to safety. As the traffic increases in a commercial development, which is going to bring an increase in number of cars, we can argue how many it may be and the time concentration of those cars. But we know that an increase in traffic brings an increase in safety concerns. I think that's a number one concern that a lot of residents have along with just the, the, I feel like we're going to wait for a problem to arise and then we're going to have to come back before you to address it. Unlike the development you just mentioned before, where a lot of these things have been thought out. I understand that that's a lot larger development and it's a different situation. But, um, you know, we feel like that those safety needs are not going to be addressed until they become a problem. So those are just some of the things we're concerned about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Moncrief. Who would be next?
Everybody, thank you for your time. Jay Tolan, 2264 Pam Circle. Uh, just wanted to speak to a couple of things. One in particular, what I think Brett was trying to get across the point about the best case scenario to avoid future expansion down Moore's Mill Road is to approve this project. And the, you're probably asking, well, how could that be possible? Because all we've been told this whole time, there's a lot of misinformation, is that by approving this project, you open it up for expansion. The reason that this PDD is even possible is because we have cross-access with Publix. The cross-access is our shared drive with Publix. If this project is approved, then that cross-access dies with this project or it's done with this project. If this project is not approved and this property is sold on with the neighboring property at some point to a larger developer, then that other property could join this property, use that cross-access as the argument for the PDD and hence, commercial shopping center. So I just wanted to point that out because I think that's been misunderstood, that the best thing that could happen to avoid future expansion of a target shopping center or whatever the, the scary things we're hearing that are not actually going to happen because council would never approve them. The best way to avoid that is to approve this project and that ends the cross-access with this project. I also just want to say, and I appreciate Mrs. Moncrief noticing that, one thing we've done with TD development and Tolan Construction is really put a lot of time and money and energy into making sure everything that we build and develop in this area is first class. So in no way what we're doing will be an eyesore or do anything but add value to not only that community, but the neighborhood as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolan. Anyone else like to address the council?
Hey, um, excuse me, I'm Rob Di Benedetto, 2667 Danbury Drive, Auburn, Alabama. And I'm an owner with Jay, along with my wife, Jaren Di Benedetto. And Jaren and I are products of Auburn. Went to Auburn High School. So we've grown up here. She, she moved here in 1972. I moved here in 1976. Uh, we've raised our family here as well, but, you know, there was a couple of things that were stated that were just not correct. And first of all, you know, this is not going to be an eyesore. You know, anything that we do, uh, we do it with the expectation to improve the image of Auburn, the city of Auburn. You know, the most recent is GH Business Center, uh, and what we did with that. And by doing that, what we're able to do is we're able to accommodate, uh, some recruitment from Montgomery, Alabama. And we actually have one of our tenants here, Lynn Matheson, uh, is here and she's, uh, willing to come up or John Ed will come up and speak about their experience with working with us in the build-out of their showroom. Another one that we brought in is an accounting firm, uh, that, uh, that is in, is upstairs that has come into, uh, Car Riggs in Ingram, that, uh, has moved, uh, some of their, in fact, the owner's son is, uh, building out his team here in Auburn in the second floor. Uh, and then we also have a couple of other smaller companies that are adding, that are, that are expecting to expand into the Auburn community. A home health provider, uh, and also a behavioral health provider. But additionally, uh, Lynn has actually brought a couple of her, uh, friends over that want to move their businesses from Montgomery to Auburn. That would make a huge impact. And these are not big box businesses. That's one thing I also wanted to mention, is that we're not interested in bringing in a big box. Uh, we, we, we don't like to work with a big box, uh, customer. We like to work with small entrepreneurial, uh, businesses that we actually build out their needs for them directly through the build-out process. And again, that, that creates a partnership that they are very much, and Lynn, you know, and John Ed will, will speak to this if they want to come up. But, you know, we are very much, uh, we, we, we make a commitment to our customers and we follow through with that and, and it causes a, a very sticky situation as far as the, the relationship in those, uh, that, that, that vendor, that, that business relationship. And, and it creates a great opportunity that we bring in great companies that then expand out and they create, uh, a lot of great employment opportunities for the area. And that, that puts back into the, the system so that we can put money in to further grow out our education system, our public safety, uh, system, our other systems. So that's the way that we go about looking at it, is if you create a top-notch product, you bring in top-notch employers, that creates a, a very, uh, robust economic situation. And, uh, from a safety standpoint, I think Jay touched on that. But again, remember, we are going to be using, that we will be, uh, going into an existing parking lot that exists today that has four curb cuts, not one, but it has, it has access to four curb cuts, three on the Moore's Mill and one on to, uh, Ogletree, you know, Hamilton Road. That, that again, it's not just that one curb cut that they're going to have to be able to come in and out of, but they're going to have access and, and a lot of them will probably, uh, go in and out and shop at Publix. And, and the last point that I want to make is that, you know, we, we, we talked to some of the members and we're willing to do whatever we can from a safety signage standpoint on our property that, that we're willing to work with, with, with the city, um, on, on what we can control on our property. But the curb cuts, we have no control over those. Those are owned and controlled by Publix. So again, uh, that's something that, that maybe, you know, you guys may not have realized, but that's something that we, 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 we can control only what we control on our property. But we're willing to do what we can to promote proper safety, uh, in and out of the, uh, our property into that parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Cause you're a former preacher, I might want to put a time limit on you, but.
Well, I was delighted to hear you, Mayor, say that you and former football players at Auburn, I graduated from Opelika High School. I'm glad to know that some Auburn players are reading books.
Come on now.
We read and recently we've been winning a lot too, so.
I'm John Ed Matheson and I'm one of these new persons that's just come. I grew up in Opelika. We used to come to Auburn. The girls were prettier in Auburn than in Opelika. And I've just noticed since the 50s when I was here, things have changed in Auburn, a lot. And, you know, it's going to continue to change. Part, my wife has a marvelous business there on Moore's Mill Road as a product of this. If you want to see a first-class operation, a beautiful building and the kind of clients that are attracted. I don't know all the past of this. I'm new here. I don't know the past. I don't know all of the technical parts of it. I do know that whatever is put, if something's going there, I'm not sure you could get anything better than a duplicate of what's on Moore's Mill Road. And that was described in one way as the location. I would say it was next to Coach Pearl's place. Folks would know that better than the other two locations that were, it's a beautiful building. And I think if you're going to look at progress, change, where we're going in the future, you couldn't have a better kind of business than you could see duplicated there. So I would just encourage you to consider, uh, giving the right of way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matheson. Who would be next? Okay, we're going to close the Publix. Comments or questions from the council?
I do have a question about, um, just that section of Moore's Mill Road. What are we looking at to mitigate the traffic woes on that road regardless of what is developed there?
Are you referring to the road in general or this section?
That, that section, but also, I mean, there is a, a great deal of traffic that comes from the south side.
I'll have City Engineer Fraser go over a couple of things, um, before she speaks engineer. And yes, Allison, I'm saying before you speak engineer, um, a couple of things. Traffic, um, picks up tremendously at the Ogletree-Hamilton Road intersection. I'm not saying there's not a lot of traffic in the follow-on section, but you get a lot of people coming from Opelika or the interstate that traverses Hamilton Road. And so to remind you, as part of the ACC church construction, you're about to see a right turn lane installed on Hamilton Road and multi-directional turn lanes all the way down. The reason I speak to that is the traffic signal at Ogletree slash Hamilton and Moore's Mill Road, timing is expected to change on that in the coming months as the, that turn lane gets in because it's carrying a high volume of traffic. So it will release some things on Moore's Mill Road and that's why I'm now speaking a little engineer myself. But I guess I'm a wannabe engineer tonight. But at the end of the day, um, there is, there is traffic there. It's relative to the peak hour in terms of this specific area and any plans that the city has other than with the development. Do I understand at all, will the, the left turn lane or the multi-directional turn lanes in the middle of the road, is that remain as is? It's already in place that goes to this driveway, but there, will there be a right turn deceleration lane as part of this development into that driveway or nothing changes about that?
Yes, if I remember correctly, uh, from the original site plan, there will be a right turn deceleration lane into this development as well as a left turn lane in. It's a little bit wide as you approach that service drive, but I think they need to widen a little more to accommodate the left turn lane. And Brett may remember that. Yes.
The city doesn't have any other improvements planned at this time to Moore's Mill Road in terms of any, any further widening of intersections and so on. The reason I mentioned the Hamilton improvements is that's at the intersection, but, but headed in a different direction.
That's correct. But it's something we keep on our radar. We, um, the city manager lives in that area. So we keep a close eye on it to make sure there are no issues.
All, all these people drive past me and I, I, you know, as well, I, I traverse Moore's Mill Road. Difference in my section to this one acknowledged is the multi-directional turn lane doesn't allow people. The city engineer doesn't care for this, but to get in there and wait for traffic to pass by while, while we go. But as acknowledged in the same question we had about Donahue earlier, that road carries a higher volume than you think and it's not a volume problem. It becomes a peak hour problem. And, and the neighborhood, you know, as acknowledged, would have challenges getting in and out. And this is not the, the fault of anyone that lives in the subdivision, but it's also why staff is staunch on, on, on connectivity to adjacent subdivisions when we have a one-way in and one-way out of a subdivision. That's very challenging for the people who live there in the long term. And again, they did not develop it. That's, that's not it, but it's, um, it creates its challenges. And the reason East Lake is able to, to traverse differently is that in terms of going back to, I, I would like City Engineer Fraser, because I've had a few questions from the council to respond a little bit to, um, where we were with, we were doing a speed study and we, we did that in the, um, I think it was August, September timeframe of 20, I believe that was, was, was that 20? And so, and kind of where she sits with the validity of that and some conversations she's had with, with the developers engineer, because a number of you've had questions about where that lies with COVID and traffic studies and what have we looked at, just to give you that information, Allison?
Yeah, and I think to clarify, we did the original speed study in 2018 when the development first came in.
No, no, 2020.
Twenty, I'm sorry. That's what I have on my.
It was in 18.
I need to read what's on my paper. In 2020 is when we did the speed study. Um, we also did the site distance analysis in 2020. And, um, at those, at that time, all of the conditions met our standards.
And then Mr. Basquelin has also, and you know, at the request of the city, there'd be a traffic study for this or a traffic letter and that was performed.
Yes, there was a traffic study done for this, even though this development technically does not meet our thresholds for traffic studies. He looked at a traffic study. He made some adjustments after that for COVID and no improvements were warranted based on the analysis.
So ultimately in moving forward, if, if, depending on what you decide, but if a development were to move forward and, and improvements were warranted at a later date, like you see throughout the city, it ultimately fall to the city to, to make those improvements?
Megan, I have a question. I, I have tons of notes on my page, so I, I may address some things too. But, uh, Mr. Tolan brought up the, how the cross-access dies. Can you kind of speak on that or maybe someone from staff speak on that and explain how that? I know he explained it. I just.
The master plan.
From a different approach.
Right, and your, and your packets does not show any cross-access to the adjacent parcel, but I believe there is a small stream there as well. Am I wrong about that, Mr. Basquelin? Headed, and we call it, we'll, we'll, we'll go with what we say. We'll say it's southeast heading down Moore's Mill Road because it starts to curve again to confuse everybody a whole bunch more. As you're heading away and toward the Lazy Bee, um, that end of the property is, there's no connectivity shown on the site plan. I don't believe staff is requiring any connectivity to the adjacent parcel. Um, and there's also a small stream there that would have to be crossed and dealt with from a core perspective.
The, the more you move, I guess, the.
Southeast.
Southeast, yeah. What, what really are the odds of something else connecting to this property that would be commercial? I mean, Mr. Tolan said that it, it can't after him, but.
There's a couple of things at play and I'll have our planning director weigh in it in just a second. And one of the discussions I, I had with a resident you heard from earlier is staff can anticipate what anybody's going to bring in an application format and you're, you're well aware of that. But, um, you know, that, that statement for me has to do with why we cannot anticipate what, what will happen in the future. You know, land use plan is showing that as rural. You definitely always have property ownership things change o- over a period of time. But Mr. Foot also has a recommendation that is in, um, the staff memo. Staff comment is also maxing this out at 125,000 square feet. Is that correct? And one of the, one of the things is, even if you put that in there, there is nothing that keeps somebody, and I think this is to the neighborhood's point, of asking that it be modified in the future. And that is what we can't hedge against. Um, even to the comp plan side of this comprehensive plan. It was adopted in 2011 and our first five-year update was delayed. This body first met with the Planning Commission about it in late 2017 and ended up being adopted in, um, early 2018. And what that means is we're looking at a five-year update that is kind of from five years from 2018 because it, it took a while. So I anticipate in the next year or so, we'll be beginning that process and starting to come to you. So there's aspects of change in the area, but in terms of a guarantee from staff or any, any way otherwise to say somebody won't come in and request a change and to what the neighborhood, I believe I was understanding what they were saying is there are no guarantees with that. The zoning ordinance has adjacent property that's rural, but people will have a right to ask for that to be changed in terms of its ability to connect to this, this piece of it. This is a complicated zoning issue. You cannot have in certain zones, shopping centers, and you heard this, in the limited development district, it has to be a neighborhood shopping center or part of a planned development district. So that ultimately the choice will reside with whatever council's sitting at the time, should such a request be made. But I don't see without major changes and you can design anything that an adjacent property can tie to this anytime soon and without a major effort and also without major cooperation of the adjoining property owners. The city at this stage is not requiring any such connectivity, which is unusual for us, but there's a reason. And part of that is the land use plan as it sits today.
You know, this is something that has been, I think, I, I have had many, many sleepless nights over this a year ago and then this being brought up again. And, um, th- this is probably the hardest decision that I have made and am going to make again. And, um, you know, I want to, I want to let the neighbors, the, the people that live in Bent Brook, uh, know that. I have heard, I have read every email that you guys have sent me. And this is a very difficult decision. But as probably the entire town knows, I'm very, very strong on property rights. And, um, it, it is, it's very hard for me to, uh, not allow the, the property owner to do what they want with their property. Uh, I know a year ago I voted differently. I have learned a lot in the past year and I, I have felt, um, a lot of guilt over that, over that vote. And, um, you know, I, I hear the concerns of safety and that's the biggest. And, you know, I, I hear the concerns of safety, and that's the biggest thing that has kind of, that, that brought me over to y'all's side last year. And, you know, I've thought a lot about it over the past few weeks and, and month or so. And you guys probably aren't going to like what I'm going to have to say, but driving is a privilege. It's not, it's not a right. You know, we have to get a driver's license to drive. We have to take, you know, an exam. We have to follow the rules of the road. We get citations. And so i- it's really up to, y- you have to be careful in a car. Cars are dangerous machines. And so I, I, you know, whichever way this goes, I, I don't know. I've not spoken to any of the other folks on council regarding this vote. It, it could turn the same way it did last year, or maybe it changes this year, I'm not sure. But I, I, I just want y'all to be, know that I, you know, I, I've given a lot of thought into this. And, you know, I, I am changing my vote from last year to, to support the developer. And I'm, and I'm sorry that I'm probably upsetting half the room.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Anybody have a question to ask?
I'd like to say that I, I appreciate what Mr. Dinabeto does for the community. He's, I think he does excellent work. I'm impressed by what he does, but however, I committed to no vote on this a, a year ago. And no matter how much I may like what you're doing, you and Mr. Tolan both, I simply cannot go back on my word. And once I give my word, if I tell you I want to do something, I'm going to do it. And no matter how much it may hurt me in the long run, you know, I, I, that's the reason that I'm voting against it tonight, because I gave my word a long time ago, and I, I just got to stick to it.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Ms. Crouch, Ms. Moncrief brought up the idea of in the future, as things maybe are elevated from a traffic situation out there, how do we, what triggers us to go reevaluate any type of mitigation efforts, whether it's related to traffic or safety?
I mean, there's a number of factors, a- as you saw. I mean, we review accident data, you know, on a daily basis. And what I mean is accidents happen all over the city. The, the traffic engineer gets those reports, and that may be something folks are unaware of. And Engineering Services is keeping close tabs, so sometimes accidents signal that we need to change something about the functionality of an area or, or change things. In terms of a full reevaluation, Allison, how often do we do a citywide traffic study?
Usually every 10 years.
And then we completed that in, what, you presented that in May of 2019, I think. It was about the time that we presented that. So while we're not there yet, and we may change that schedule, it's also based on development in the areas. We've heard much about tonight, other conditions, concerns from citizens, concerns from council members, you know, the usual. This time, as we mentioned, we're not undertaking a restudy of, of this, and it would be a very long time, if ever, if a traffic signal warranted at this location, just because what we call side street volume, the volume coming out of Benton Brook neighborhood and the volume at this time coming out of the driveway or known as the service drive, would not warrant a traffic signal in any way, shape, or form. You have strong conditions up and down this corridor, rock fence road is a, is a hot button. I'm sure Councilperson Hovey hears much about it, and possibly Councilperson Dixon. You know, we have other places, and we do, we do study those, we do look at data and so on. But we, we will continue to look at it. A mitigating factor for this would be challenging without one of those things coming into play.
We had a number of residents that spoke to concerns over the pond and the water quality out there, and Mr. Basquelin made some comments related to that for their efforts. What, what kind of certainty can we give the citizens from a municipal, a city level that we're going to be keeping our eye on that as well?
Let's see, well, we have Mr. Carson, you want to speak to that, or City Engineer Fraser? The water quality falls under Water Resource Management, which is why I'm asking.
Well, we have the design manual that has the watershed buffers in, I mean, not the watershed buffers, but the stream buffers, and it will make sure those are maintained, and will vigorously enforce our erosion control measures. There will be a plan submitted and a meeting with the developer and contractor on site before anything happens to ensure they understand the rules of the road, so.
And that's ongoing, Mr. Carson. I mean, we're, we're keeping eye on that.
Everywhere.
Right.
That's right.
It does, but I think there always needs to be acknowledgement that when it rains in Auburn, you will have red clay in a number of water sources, meaning it will wash off from people's yards. You know, it washes everywhere. So, you know, the notion that even with a water quality pond, they also have to design it a little differently. There are ways in which water quality, when you're dealing with that, and not speaking engineer again, but it's more that it's supposed to filter some of that out before it gets further downstream to improve water quality as it leaves that area. It, you know, it's challenging to understand and so on, but I also don't want anybody leaving here thinking the city said we have a design manual and everything's going to be perfect. We rely heavily on the developer to do what they're supposed to do. And even in the best of conditions, if we get a 50 or 100-year rain, there are times, stuff happens particularly during construction. Once the site is fully stabilized and occupied, it, it tends to improve as long as we don't see big erosion in the landscaping areas. Mr. Carson's staff, though, keeps an eye on this. And you can watch developers and the engineers in the room nod their heads. We're very tough on erosion control enforcement, and some of you hear about that at times. Well, we do issue citations, we do shut construction sites down, and that has happened. It's not our intent, but also our citizens are very clear what their expectations are, as is the city council, and we do our best to enforce that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carson. Ms. Crouch, Mr. Price made a comment that maybe the, the cleanup crew at the, at the shopping center is blowing trash into the roadway and the side of the road. Is that something we could possibly check into and, and make sure that we can stop that if that's in fact happening? Do we have the ability to do that?
It's a big ask, and what I mean is, we're, we're certainly always happy to reach out and make contact. We did, it's my understanding. And Dan Ballard is here, he's our interim Public Works Director. I do know that we've had a crew out there recently, based on concerns from the neighborhood. Public Works handles our litter collection. They do not handle general city trash pickup, but we have had crews out there picking up, and we certainly do our best. We're also appreciative of that Mr. Price had mentioned and others. We have a lot of neighborhoods in this area that citizens go pick it up. It blows out of people's pickup trucks, it comes out of dumpsters. Periodically, it comes out of our own trucks, you know, where it doesn't compact properly and, and flies out. So we're happy to look at and, and talk with shopping center owners. But I can also assure you that citywide, everybody loves to blow everything from their property into the street, and then it becomes our issue. And I watch it every morning when I drive to work, not just on Moores Mill Road, along Gay Street. That's a very popular thing to do in college and so on. The university is very good at picking theirs up, but we will certainly be happy to reach out to the shopping center owners.
I have a just suggestion, do a PR campaign, then a technically criminal littering, and they could face charges for putting it out on city streets. Maybe some kind of PR campaign, let them know we're going to be watching it.
Understood, and I think I've heard from all of you in my one-year tenure in this role about, about litter in general, at least once, if not many times. And so definitely understood, and, you know, we'll continue to work on that. And our citizens are pretty diligent at contacting us, and we need their eyes and ears, and we appreciate that.
Anyone else on the council? Have any other comments or questions?
Ron.
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Toby.
I would like to acknowledge, acknowledge the neighborhood, you know, in Benton Brook and my neighbors. It is tough, and I'll, the north side of town, you know, really has to deal with this a lot more than we have on our side. So a tip of the cap to the, the tough decisions that we've had to make through the years up there. But, you know, it does admittedly hit home, you know, a little, a little harder when it's your, your friends and neighbors and, and people you, you know, you appreciate and respect. You know, I've, I've already voted yes on this, Tommy. You know, we, we haven't seen any, it's been noted tonight that we really hadn't seen any difference, or there is no difference in this, this, this application. So I don't suppose my, my, my ramblings would be a surprise, but I, I want to acknowledge the involvement of the neighborhood and their, their efforts and concerns, and, and they are certainly not unfounded and, and not unheard. But I do, you know, tend to, tend to, to make these decisions. I try to make these decisions taking emotion out of it, you know, in, in these tough deals. You know, we do have, in my opinion, sometimes a, a bit of an outdated land use plan, and I think that's been acknowledged, and, and that's why we do have to massage it a little bit quite often, and look forward to seeing that, that change a little bit. But, you know, I think some important points would be the, our traffic study, you know, and the safety issues. And I, Moores Mill, that, that Hamilton Road, Ogletree, rock fence, I wholly acknowledge this would be a difficult spot to pull out of, but we're in a difficult spot when our traffic, traffic data doesn't give us the tool to negate, you know, an entrance across the way. You know, it almost takes that, takes that away from us. And so we're, we're in a bind there. And, you know, I, I think, after hearing this and studying this for, for a year or more now, I might tend to agree that, that this, this particular application might be the best-case scenario, you know, in the lowest density. And I know that doesn't, you know, that's not a defeatist attitude, but I mean, I, I think that it is worth acknowledging that, that the, the traffic coming to and from, you know, this spot would be less and lower than, than some other options. And so, you know, I, I will, will support this again. But I, I wanted to, you know, make the point to acknowledge, you know, the, the tough decision, you know, and the neighborhood's concerns. And I, they're not unfounded and unheard, but I just think, you know, overall, we do have to make, make a decision that I think is in the best interest of the, of the, of the area and, and the development. And I think it's going to be a, something to, to appreciate and, and be proud of. And, you know, as far as, you know, a gray area, and where, where does our industrial or commercial use end and our residential begin? I think at the, you know, the back of a public loading dock might be a good place to start. You know, and I just don't think it's a stretch in my heart that, you know, this, you know, a lower-density commercial use is, is a stretch.
Ms. Toby, anyone else? I certainly want to acknowledge all the good people from Benton Brook. You have spoken with class and passion, and I appreciate the way you've directed your comments and all of your emails towards us. Thank you for how you've handled that. And I appreciate the developer and his representatives, their representatives, for the way they've responded, not defensively, but try to answer the questions and, and provide information. I know there's been lots of meetings between different people over the years to bring this forward. Over a year ago, when we considered this exact plan, I, I voted yes for it. Tonight, as we sit here, it's the same plan, but it's less intense. They have carved off 7,000 square feet. I believe that having an office right behind a commercial shopping center does make sense, and it is a good step down use as you lead into potentially more residential. So I'll be voting in support of this tonight. Okay, anyone else? All right, Lindsey with the roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
No.
Bitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, no, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwald?
No, ma'am.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to four. Mayor, if you're ready, item 9B4 is a request from Blake Rice on behalf of John and Sherry Todd to rezone approximately 4.83 acres of property located northeast of the City of Auburn Soccer Complex, adjacent to the silos at Conway from Murrell to Limited Development District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its December 9, 2021 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion, seconds. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Were you coming forward, ma'am? I'm sorry, okay, well, I apologize. Please forgive me, I didn't pay attention.
I'm 859 Zellus Court, and I came down here to ask the city what is they going to do about that fence in front of my door?
Right now, Ms. Harden, this is, this is related to this topic, item four here, related to the silos development.
Okay.
Your conversation would be better, best at the end during citizens' open communication.
Okay, I thought, that's what I thought you said.
I'm sorry if I didn't make myself clear. Please forgive me. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We'll bring you forward a little bit later. Okay, so then I will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, Lindsey with the roll call.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwald?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson?
Yes.
Item 9B5 is a request from Blake Rice on behalf of John and Sherry Todd to amend ordinance 3252 Silos at Conway Plan Development District to add 4.83 acres of property currently zoned Limited Development District located northeast of the City of Auburn Soccer Complex. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its December 9, 2021 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion, seconds. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. No, ma'am, not yet. All right. It's coming. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, Lindsey.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Bitten? Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwald?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Yes.
Under resolutions this evening, item 10A1 is a request from Brett Basquelin on behalf of PSM Holdings Alabama LLC and TD Development Incorporated for conditional use approval of office uses and reclassification of a neighborhood shopping center to a community shopping center for a property located at 2449 Moores Mill Road in the Limited Development District with a planned development district overlay. The Planning Commission failed to pass a motion recommending approval of this request by a vote of one to five at its November 9 meeting. This item was postponed from the December 21, 2021 city council meeting. A public hearing is required.
Moved to approve. Second.
Have a motion, and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Public hearing? It's not noted in your agenda, but this item, I don't believe, had a public hearing on December 21 because it was immediately postponed, so therefore, sorry, that's not on your agenda, but yes, you need a public hearing.
All right.
It is on there, okay.
Okay, I was looking at the agenda, not looking at the. All right, I apologize. All right, so we do have a motion, a second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
For 2547 Glenbrook Drive, and I understand tip-off is in 15 minutes. But there are a few things I want to go over. A couple of things to clarify. I, I, I don't want this group to, to, to think that a commercial use is a less intense traffic use than residential. Residential, the, the permitted use prior to your previous decision would have allowed eight residential units, which at a peak time is about eight to 10 vehicles, where this is 62 and 45. So I, I, I just don't want, moving forward, you guys to think that commercial is less intense than residential. Multifamily, maybe. The other thing, a cou- couple of things. We, we talked about before the spirit of the LDD zoning and a community shopping center. And obviously, there's a concern about that 500,000 square feet moving down the road. And, and really, I think it would be a good idea to see if there, there is a way tonight that we could kind of close the door on this, find some way to do that. Because as development continues down Moores Mill Road, it'll impact East Lake and other, others. And so this room will fill up, and voices potentially could get louder. So I have a few conditions, which, based on previous approved items, and, and I've checked with others in the community that feel like these are reasonable conditions. First is a structural permanent solution to restrict a left-hand turn from the service drive entrance, not all three, but just the service drive entrance onto Moores Mill Road. And I know that the developer mentioned that they'd have no control over that. Well, now they are now part of the PDD, which is now the entire 15 so, or so acres, which includes those three entrances. So I would first like you guys to consider adding a permanent structural element at that service drive that does not permit a left turn down Moores Mill Road. So that's number one. Number two. Number two is to put a condition on this approval, or denial, but approval if you so choose, to restrict the expansion of this PD, PDD through this property. Okay? I know that the layout is a loop road, which could change next week. Okay? There's, there's no guarantees. So, and there could be a stubout. We, we don't know what's going to happen, but if we restrict any expansion of the PDD at that property, and you can add the property to the north, the church property as well, I guess, but that is under development now as a church, then I think that would save a lot of us a lot of time, a lot of headache, a lot of discussion in the future as to the expansion in this area. So those are the two I'd like to, for y'all to consider. If you need me to repeat them, I can, but if not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fordover. Public hearing still open? If anybody... Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Bernie Merritt, 2492 Glenbrook Drive. Thank you for your efforts, and I sincerely mean that. I also want to go on public record and say, there's not a better builder in the area. This was not about the builder. It was not about the property. It was not about what he's gonna build. It's not about his tenant. It's about the, obviously, safety issue. So I want to make sure everyone understands I have full faith in Rob and Jay and everything they're gonna do. That it was not about that. So publicly, I want to make sure I say that. What I want to do is, and I don't have the answer, and I do not have the engineering degree that Greg does, nor the knowledge, what I'm asking for you to do is to obviously allow staff to come up with conditions that will help us as a neighbor, as a neighborhood, that will protect many of the things each one of you said, whether it was what Jay said, whether it was what Mr. Dixon said, whoever was some of the comments, even what you said, Mayor. What are the things that we can do to protect this neighborhood? What are the things we can do from a cosmetic standpoint along that roadway? What are the things that we can do to put conditions on this to ensure that it stops, that it stops there, and that we do the best we can to help resolve what we'll have to deal with in the neighborhood? We're only 50 neighbors or houses. We're not anywhere near the size of an Eastlake or a Moore's Mill, but we are the one that's right there. So we are putting it in your hands to come up with some conditions that will ultimately try to help us and solve the conditions or issues that we might have. And I don't know what they are, but I have a feeling that he sure does, and maybe many of you do as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Who'll be next?
One of the things, just to clarify, we talked about the turn lanes that are out there on the, on the street, what was going to be required. We did do a traffic study. The, the amount of traffic coming in and out of the driveway does not warrant turn lanes, but city regulations do require us to provide those due to the road classification. So there will be widening for a left turn lane and a right, right turn lane. The only way that we can not do them is we would have to get a waiver from the city engineer or appeal that to the planning commission. So as of right now, our requirement is a left turn lane and a right turn lane into this driveway. So there, there are road improvements associated with that. So essentially, the three-lane section from the intersection will extend past this driveway and then taper back as opposed to tapering down before this. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. In regards to the proposed conditions, I mean, we can't change Publix's access. We offered that we would provide signage and those types of things within our projects to encourage our tenants to go straight or to use the other curb cuts and not use that curb cut. You know, based upon traffic patterns and those types of things for this development, we're, we're, in regards to trip distribution, we're assuming 70% of our people are coming and going to the north, and, you know, only 30% roughly are coming from the south back towards the county. So when, when we, when we look at that, you know, there's very few left turns coming out of this driveway that are going to be going back that way. But like we said, we've, we've, when we were discussing this with the, with the neighbors before, you know, we can add signage on our property and encourage our tenants not to do it, but we can't physically change Publix's driveway. And then in regards to restricting the expansion of the, of the PDD, you know, the neighborhood designation within the, the definition of a neighborhood shopping center within our LDD underlying zoning prevents the PDD from, essentially, from the neighborhood shopping center designation not being located at the intersection of arterial and collectors. And so, again, we are not connecting any cross-access to the adjacent properties, whether to the church, to the east. Our only connectivity is through the shopping center. So there's really, if, if the people come next door, you know, they can't get access through our property. And so, you know, that, in my mind, prevents that expansion of the PDD in, in regards to a neighborhood shopping center. And that's what they're concerned about. They're concerned about this neighborhood designation of a potential Super Walmart, Super Target, something that, of, of size and substance. But that is, by definition, a neighborhood shopping center, and it has to be within the LDD, it has to be located at the, at a, at two arterials or an arterial and a collector. And from my knowledge, right, Society Hill is probably the closest thing to a collector road that way, and of course, Hamilton and Oaklery would meet that designation. But there's nothing between us and Society Hill that would, that would create that situation to where you could have this neighborhood shopping center designation through there. Like we were explaining before, our access has always been through the shopping center from day one of the shopping center for this parcel. That's why it's integrated and part of that. So, you know, you know, other than, you know, these guys living here, doing here, you know, it's our commitment to, you know, we're only approved to do this 33,000 square feet of office. We're restricted by our agreement with Publix on what we can and can't do, and it's essentially only office. We can't do anything, we can't sell competing goods and that kind of stuff. So we have restrictions on us as part of our agreement with, with Publix. So we do have restrictions on that, so.
Can I have a question? Could you keep mentioning neighborhood shopping center, but this request is asking to reclassify it to a community shopping center? So how does that change?
I mean...
Is it the same?
Yeah, it's just the same. It's just a higher, you know, it's just a higher square footage.
Right. But I think the neighbors across the way are concerned about potentially this, this developer acquiring that rural property and wanting to expand further south.
But, but we can't. The, the, the PDD is controlled by Publix. They're the largest property owner in, in, in the PDD, so they control the PDD. So it would have to be, you know, we, we couldn't expand the PDD on ourselves if we bought it next door. It, it would have to only come through Publix or through an agreement with Publix. And just like they're restricting us, they're not going to put their competitor, whether it's a dollar store, a Target store, or whatever, they're not going to put anything competitor, you know, adjacent to them, you know, and grant their approval.
So it, so if this council decided to add that condition, it wouldn't really change regardless. It's just, I mean, it would be the same. We're just, we would just be formalizing that in this, this resolution.
Yeah, I guess.
We'll get to that in a minute as to whether or not that's even an order on conditional use approval. You have some restrictions in the planned development district, but I don't believe you can add a condition now restricting the planned development district in the conditional use approval. What's before you is the consideration of conditional use per the table of permitted uses for things that go on in a planned development district that you just approved that include office use and a, and a change of classification because of a square footage issue. Then in the planned development district approval you just made, you've restricted the total square footage to no more than 125,000 square feet. You just approved that.
Okay.
And so it's complicated. If anybody wanted to amend this further on down the road, yes, there are aspects could be done. Much would have to be undone from the current PDD that you just approved. And again, that will be up to the city council and planning commission at the time. There isn't a good way to guard against that in terms of, of now that we're at this, this point. Now, on the prevailing side of things, if you guys want to bring that back up at this meeting or another meeting, you can do that and add a further condition if you want to say no more expansions. But I want to be, also advise you that any council that comes after you could remove that condition. So it, it's, it's up to you how you want, how you want to do that.
Yeah. I mean, the only other thing I would say to that, too, is if anybody out there, so any, any of those tenants wanted to, to make any slight modification, you know what I mean, to say the gas station want to add on 500 square feet or something, or, you know, the, the drive-through goes away at, at one of these and they want to expand, you know, they couldn't add, they can't do anything out there without coming back to you guys, whether it's expanding the PDD like, like, like you mentioned that you're trying to prevent, but it would also restrict any of those businesses within there from being able to, to, to expand either. You know what I mean? They can't do it at, at this juncture right now. They would have to come back through you to get, get it, you know, if they want to enclose 5,000 square feet, they're having to come back to you right now.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Okay. Public hearing. I'll answer questions in the council. Council, answer questions. Thoughts?
He's mentioned that the second condition really wouldn't make much difference. How about the first, the restricting the left turn lane?
Restricting the left turn, it's certainly up to you. I will tell you, there is no regard for everywhere in the city that we have no left turn signs. So it can be put up, and some people that choose to follow that, but at the very same office complex down the street, I watch tens of, many cars every day of the week illegally turn left out of there, and we have what we call a pork chop or whatever. We've got curbing poured. And so certainly, some people will abide by that. And so I, certainly, I don't see a problem, City Engineer Fraser, with, with asking them to post a sign, and the Public Safety Director Register might be able to speak to the fact that I don't believe that's enforceable by the police department either. And I just want you to be clear, when we, when we approve these things, it's not because it's on a private property situation. But in terms of deterring the public, there are a number of people that would abide by that.
Well, I noticed the standard parking garage, for example, when you come out of it, coming this direction, you've got those...
Those fancy things you saw.
Big yellow dudes that if you hit those things, you're gonna know it.
We should compliment City Engineer Fraser because I've been giving her a hard time since the standard opened about that because it's, people are making dangerous turns, and she came up with a solution that wasn't terribly ugly that is deterring some...
Something like that would be beneficial for preventing a left-hand turn, I would, I would suppose.
Our challenge is we have a left turn in, into this development. The way the lanes are going, there's a left turn in, so to, to deter the out is a little more challenging in this realm. I think if you're asking that staff look at any and all solutions with the developer, we're, we're happy to do that to see if there's something, and I think the neighborhood has been clear, and your question's been clear, anything we can do to assist them, we're happy to look at in, in partnership with the developer and see what can be done.
Are we, are we allowed to make those kind of restrictions on pre-existing tenants? Or to, I mean...
I'll have the city engineer weigh in. Well, I just meant from a, from, from our lens, a no left turn, it's not something that the city engineer has recommended at this time.
Right. Based on the analysis of accidents and site distance at this location, I wouldn't think it would be warranted because these conditions are meeting our standards. And as Megan mentioned, there is a left turn movement into this driveway, so we'd have to look at it pretty closely if there were restrictions on the lefts out.
And we already have 18-wheelers that come in and out of that location making whatever determination they choose.
They make a big maneuver in, and the neighborhood would, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not aware, probably barring a major issue on Interstate 85 that they turn left all that often out there, maybe beer trucks, possibly Frito-Lay, others who have smaller trucks, they may be going to, to serve the Lazy Bee and other things and may go left. I've not witnessed one, but the neighborhood certainly would have a better perspective on that.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, so this is a, this is a resolution, so it's a boys' vote. All right? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, let's do that. Let's do a roll call, please.
Dawson?
No, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwald?
No, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
No.
Bitten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Five-four. Approved. Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. This is your opportunity to talk to the council about anything that you would like. Remember, these comments are directed towards the council, and these are comments from you, the citizen. Ms. Harden, I believe you wanted to come forward, so we'll open this up and allow you to start. You do have three minutes, and please give us your name and address for the record.
Eva Harden at 859 Zellus Court. I wanted to know when that fence gonna be removed from my front door?
Ms. Harden, I will ask the city manager to give, have her or staff get with you tomorrow. I do not know the answer to that question right now, but certainly, we can get you an answer as soon as possible.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, in disclosing that, Mr. Cummings has met with Ms. Harden. I plan to reach out. I'm, theoretically, I'm out of town through tomorrow. I'm at a conference and going back and forth, but I'll be reaching out to her directly on Thursday myself to meet her onsite.
So Ms. Harden, the city manager will be reaching out to you in a couple of days, okay?
Could you tell us, what's the issue?
Ms. Harden has been, been to you before. She's met with staff, her neighbor in an affordable housing subdivision constructed a fence that is a lawful fence along the property line. The way the setbacks and so on run, it, it very much appears it's in Ms. Harden's front yard. And her front porch is very close to the fence. It meets all of our planning and zoning requirements. It's been surveyed multiple times. I've had Mr. Cummings out recently to look at it again. We do have, and what I don't have an update on, part of the, the neighbor's fence, which is lawful, is in a city easement. We are actually having issues citywide, all over the city. We have discovered that property owners, they don't know any better, are having fences built right through major easements that are creating problems. And we've actually been, our inspection services department is spending a lot of time right now getting fences out of easements. It's causing maintenance problems and other things. So we will be able to get the fence retracted back, and Mr. Cummings, it hasn't been moved to date, right? That's something we're working on, but in terms of, I've been working with councilperson Taylor on this issue for some time as well, and she had asked that I reach out directly, and I want to spend adequate time with Ms. Harden on, onsite to listen to what she has to say. But this has been reviewed by the city attorney. It's been reviewed by our development departments. We've had city surveyors poring over the information to everyone, and, and the fence is lawfully placed by the neighbor on her, her own, the neighbor's property. It's just the way the house sits, it's in a cul-de-sac. I've been out there multiple times, I've had other staff members with me. We've all looked, and probably 10 or 15 staff members have been out to try to address this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, one of the questions I want to ask, and I hate she left, but I just wanted to know, you said that the fence is on the city easement?
Part of the fence comes close, close enough to the street. Part of the fence comes close enough to the street. We have an easement in the cul-de-sac. It's around the radius of the cul-de-sac. So the very front, kind of from back of curb. So I don't know if it's 10 feet or not. I don't recall. Off the top of my head, it's 10 feet. It needs to retract a little bit back to get it out of that front easement, and we'll be working with the neighbor to get that done. And of course, when we do that, we give people reasonable time to clear out of the easement. So it doesn't assist her with her porch encroachment issue, where she feels like the fence is very close to the front corner of her porch, but at least it moves it back from the street a little bit. That is, and in clarifying this with the city attorney, that is the only relief the city can provide. We have no other legal mechanism.
So about how many feet from there? Do you know?
I don't know.
Because I think that's going to be, that's going to be her issue, too. I mean, you know, if it's still basically going to be where it's at.
Yeah. And there is, there is not a legal remedy for that, other than neighbors-to-neighbor relations. So...
Who will be next?
Good evening. I'm Billy Allen, president of NAACP Branch 5038. I will present three things to you all tonight. The first thing is, the NAACP is very dissatisfied with the seven to two vote to approve the City of Auburn's amended redistricting map. We will continue our efforts to get at least two majority-minority wars in Auburn. We have contacted certain sources for guidance and direction. Number two, we will be highly active and involved in the election campaign period leading up to the August 23, 2022 city election. Number three, we will be highly active and involved in the election on August 23 to elect people that support our interests, that support our issues, and support our concerns. Thank you for the time, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Who will be next?
Well, bills are still piling up. I don't understand about the ordinance 3288. You know, I, five of you voted for it, three of you voted against. And I appreciate Witten, Smith, and Hovey to vote against it. But the one thing I don't understand is that nothing's changed in my community. I'm in a conservative area. It's clean as it was before the ordinance. It's still clean now. It was quiet before the ordinance, and it's still quiet. Also, the same traffic that's always been there is always there. And I don't understand that you created an ordinance that discriminated against the practical things. You allowed the elite in the conservative areas say that we're more important than the rest of the areas. Also, you ripped away, I mean, you ripped away the constitutional rights of 151 families in the communities. And you, and what I mean by constitutional right, we have a right to do what we want in our homes if there's no disruption. There's nothing there. When you made the decision, I don't understand why, because there's no data. I don't know for any reason that you voted for it, but you voted for it. Everything else I've seen in ordinance, you have all this data, all this raw data, you put all this stuff together, and you create this atmosphere of, you know, there's a good point and a bad points, and we have a hard time making a decision. So I don't understand that. Also, you took away our right to be able to have the webpage for Airbnb. And the third and fourth thing is, you treated us like criminals. I mean, you've taken us off the court. One of the ladies who's older than I am was basically called a liar within the, to the judge, and the judge said, and it was by the person who was the prosecutor, and that the city put up. And that person, the judge said, I've known her for 30 years. What she says is the truth and so forth. So I don't understand the approach that the city has done towards any of us. We're just people trying to survive. And I think that it's time that some kind of be made up where the ones who have had the approval to be able to continue Airbnb, you should also allow the rest of us to have Airbnb. We don't do any disruption. There's none. And I want to pay my bills. I don't want to give them out to y'all to pay. They're my bills. I'm responsible for them. And we did nothing wrong. All we did was operate. And you told us, you went into our home, and you said we cannot do this anymore. So, thank you.
Mayor, we need name and address for the record, please.
Name and address for the record?
I'm sorry. Oh, gosh. Yeah, Robert Wilkins. I even wrote it up here. Robert Wilkins, 261 Denson Drive, Auburn, Alabama.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who will be next? Okay. Is there a move to adjourn? We adjourn.